This is your city council. Mayor, Skip Henderson, Byron Hickey, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Joanne Kogle, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. John Anchor, District 9. At-large counsel Travis Chambers, District 10. At-large counsel Lindsay McLemore, Clerk of Counsel, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Well, good morning. I want to welcome everybody. Good morning. We'll call the meeting to order. We want to welcome everybody here, and we appreciate you joining us as we do the business of the city. We will begin as we always do, and that's by asking God's presence in this facility. And I'm going to call with a very special amount of pride, former intern in the mayor's office, I want to call Youth Pastor Mitchell Harris from Pleasant Grove Baptist Church of Columbus to the podium. Mitchell, if you would, just hit the light, and we'll get it turned on for you, sir. Let's see. Lindsay, can you get that? We've changed systems, as you can tell. Yeah. There we go. Welcome, Mitchell.
Thank you. Good morning. I bring greetings from Pleasant Grove Baptist Church, where Pastor Gloria Smith is the senior pastor, and I'm the youth pastor, and I'm glad to be here with you this morning. And I also leave this word with you as we go into prayer. The last time I was here, former counselor Judy Thomas, who has passed, gave me encouraging words that she would see me here once again very soon. So I just want us to keep her in our memory as we go in prayer this morning. Heavenly Father, we give you glory and honor. Lord, we magnify your name, and we lift you above every other name. We come to you humbly ourselves and with bold confidence in your power. Lord, I thank you this morning for allowing us to be here in the presence, in the presence of each other that we might fellowship over this meeting and that the counselors might be able to come together and do what is of your will. Lord, we first come recognizing that all counselors, city leaders, all of those who are making an impact in our community are first humans before they are our city leaders. And Lord, we ask that your grace and your mercy be with them as they encounter things throughout their daily lives of what they are going through, Father. And then, Lord, that you will equip them in their personal time with the tools that they need in order to come and lead the city with the greatest responsibility. Lord, we thank you right now because we believe that there is change that will take place, Father. Lord, we believe that you're able to continue to align the hearts of those that love you and align the hearts of those that are leading us, Father, to do what is of goodwill, Father. Lord, allow no one to be weary in well-doing, Father, even when, if things around them do not look so well. Allow them to continue to know that your grace will be sufficient for them at all times. So, Lord, we bless this meeting. We ask that you bless each and everyone who is here today. Bless each and every leader. Bless our community. Fill your people with hearts of love that will not continue in hatred. Lord, and that this community will continue to flourish and that you will continue to help us to remove all evil, God, and do what is good. In Jesus' name, we thank you. We give you glory, honor, and praise. Amen.
Amen. Mitchell, thank you, sir, for joining us today. If you would, please stand and join me in pledging the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna, we'll start by approving the minutes from the June 17 meeting. All right, there's a motion and a second to approve those minutes. Are there any edits or any questions that anybody had? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, those minutes are passed. We've got a special guest in our chambers today. Want to bring up to the podium to introduce to, most of you have already met her. We're so excited that she's joined us here at Columbus. She is the new president and CEO of Choose Columbus, Andy Helm. I'm going to invite you, if you want to come up and introduce Missy. Missy Kendrick is joining us.
Don't give him that opportunity.
I know. I figured it'd be a good test for y'all.
I am a former general. I've never met a microphone. I don't like mayor. So, members of council, mayor, it is an honor to introduce my boss, Missy Kendrick. So we are really fortunate to have Missy in our community. She has a long distinguished history of economic development accomplishments around the state. We were very fortunate to pluck her from Rome, where she was doing some really amazing things. And so Missy has now been here at Choose Columbus since mid-May, and it kind of seems like that was like six months ago because we've crammed a whole lot into the last two months. So with that, I introduce Missy Kendrick.
Good job. Thank you very much. Not too bad on the fly. So it is a pleasure. I don't have a presentation, per se, for you this morning. I just wanted an opportunity to come by and introduce myself to you all and look at each of you and tell you personally that I would love your input on where we go and how we move forward with economic development for Columbus and Muskogee County, to share a little bit with you about what we're working on and how we plan to move forward. We have a new structure with economic development. So over the last 963 years, economic development has been housed under the Chamber of Commerce umbrella. And so what we've done is we have pulled that out from under the Chamber of Commerce only so that we can have a more focused approach to economic development. It is, I like to say that it's not a divorce with the Chamber of Commerce. It's basically that I am a young adult moving out. Young, young adult moving out. And so we are now, have put together a team that includes Andy as well as Michelle Phillips, who is our office manager slash grant specialist. And so we are going to have a focused approach that will allow us to attract new business and industry to our community as well as focus on our existing business and industry here. And so we've already started working on our existing industry visits, going out and sharing with our existing industries the resources that are available to them from our community and from the state. And so we want to make sure that they're taking advantage of everything that's available to them out there as well as trying to attract new business and industry, new jobs, advanced manufacturing, higher wages to our community. So we have hit the ground running. We've got a lot of things going on already. One thing that we are going to be doing over the next month or so is that we're going to be doing an internal strategic planning process to take a look at how we're going to do economic development specific to Columbus and our region. And then we're going to take our internal strategic plan, and we're going to marry that with the new, what was Columbus 2025 and the new initiative, the new community-wide initiative for strategic planning for our area. So with that, I don't want to keep you any longer than I need to, but I just wanted to say my door is open. I'll provide our information to each of you and would encourage you to please give me a call. I'd love to discuss with you in any further detail or as much detail as you would like about what we're doing and how we plan to move forward.
Missy, I tell you, I'll tell you publicly what I share with you privately, and that is when this news was first sort of leaking out that you had decided to join the team in Columbus and really create the team in Columbus, I had four different individuals from Rome that I know, including the mayor, including the city manager, and private individuals, call me and tell me that, man, you guys got a winner. And just watching you operate, and I know talking with Andy and all of the things that you guys have initiated already has proven to be true. So we're excited to have you.
That's not what they told me. They told me different things. They were not happy at all.
Rome was not pleased you left, but they were hard-pressed to find a reason why you shouldn't take advantage of an opportunity. And we're delighted to have you.
This is a great opportunity. Thank you all very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, Andy. All right. And that's all we've got on the mayor's agenda. So we'll forward it on to the city attorney. The city attorney?
All right. Hope everybody had a good fourth. Thank you, mayor. Got a short business agenda today. First item up is the school district levy for the coming year. It is ready for adoption.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you would, please put it on the screen, and we'll allow council to register their votes. Well, I tell you what. Let's go ahead and just do a voice vote. All those in favor of item one, please signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed? All right, that's approved.
All right. That's the same rate as last year. That's passed. Next item, next couple items we've got from Chief Scarpa at Fire and EMS. These are requests from him. The first one is to impose a lift assistance fee for service calls made to assisted-living units. Chief, if you want to come up and make a few comments. Anybody got questions around the table?
Not yet.
Okay. Chief Scarpa, introduce himself.
Good morning, mayor, members of council, deputy city managers, city attorney, ladies and gentlemen, South Scarpa Fire and EMS chief. The lift assist ordinance is designed specifically for our health care facilities or home health facilities and our private ambulance service services that are leveraging our resources to do something they're getting paid for. This is not for responding to someone's residence and helping them into their bed or out of their bed. This is for specifically for facilities that have paid staff that refuse to move patients that are in their care from one place to another and want to leverage our resources to do that for them. So the design of this ordinance is to gain compliance and to encourage them to staff appropriately to take care of the people that are in their charge. And I'm happy to answer any questions in regard.
But chief, if they are treated or transported, this does not apply.
That is correct. This has nothing to do with patients that are treated or transported. The vast majority of these calls that we go on, 90-plus percent of them, there is no treatment and transport. This is strictly moving a patient from A to B.
Counselor Tucker?
I was going to wait before he leave if somebody else had a question, but I didn't have a question.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from council?
Okay. Stand by, chief, for the next item. We'll bring that back in two weeks for a vote, mayor.
Okay.
Next item without a note.
Yeah. Public can speak to it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification for me. Where the funds, where would they go? Where would they be absorbed to? The fee?
It's a great question. Typically, all of the fees that we collect are resulted back to the general fund.
Okay, the next item is the ordinance that would add a new provision to Chapter 11 to require safety standards pertaining to powered bicycles, powered mobility devices, and storage batteries. The way I understand it, it's a battery safety measure. Chief, you want to fill them in?
Yes. So if you watch the news at all and seen the challenges with e-bikes across the country, what typically happens when e-bikes get introduced into a community, they come in small numbers, and they're usually not a problem. What you see in larger communities and larger cities oftentimes is where they get introduced en masse. And then when they get introduced en masse, they become a challenge for the communities to clean up and then to manage. But what happens over time is the businesses that utilize these bikes to make money, they're desirous of saving money. And so when the batteries go bad on their bikes, they swap them out. Now, what we are encouraging with this ordinance is that's perfectly fine. We want you to swap them out. But we want you to swap them out with a UL-approved or a Fractory Mutual-approved battery, just like the one that came with the device, as opposed to one that you might perhaps buy through a second-hand manufacturer in Amazon or something like that. Because what tends to happen with those types of batteries is when they're stored or when they're charged in storage, they catch fire. And the fires are catastrophic and have cost many lives across this country. And so we are simply trying to get ahead of this problem. I have met with the powered bike facilities here in town that rent these bikes and talked to them and had their support for this ordinance. The desire here, again, is to ensure that when we change the batteries on these bikes, that we were replacing them with like batteries to prevent fires from occurring. Typically, when these things are charged or when they're stored, they're stored in homes, hallways, in areas where there's not a lot of people. Or when they're charged at night, there have been numerous, numerous fires across the country. When they're charged at night, and these things catch fire, and the fires are catastrophic, immediately, immediately filling up the home with smoke, leaving no chance for victims to survive. So we're trying to get ahead of this problem, establishing this ordinance. I don't think it's going to be a problem today, but we're setting precedence for the future. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions with chief? Counselor Anchor?
Is that just for residential? Does it include residential?
That's correct. It is for commercial. We encourage a residential, but obviously, we can't. It's very difficult to enforce that. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions?
Okay, if there aren't any, we'll bring that back also in two weeks for a vote. Thank you, chief.
Chief.
Wait.
But I just want to be real quick. Before you walk off, I wanted to congratulate you and all of our community partners for winning the National Association of Counties 2025 Achievement Award for the Columbus Correct Care. I think for us to make it on a national scale and national level for that, and we're just implementing it, I think that speaks volumes. So thank you and your team, and please thank everybody from, I know New Horizons is a part of it and so many other nonprofit organizations in health care. So just thank them for this. I think this is a good look. And I will say this. Since 2021, I've been attending NACO. We have never won anything since I've been there. So for me to go on Thursday and on Saturday, our name is called out. It's, I'm going to be smiling ear to ear. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's definitely a team effort. There are a lot of partners involved, and certainly, the council's support has been immeasurable. And the mayor allowing me to utilize his platform to support the Mayor's Commission on Health is, we're doing great things in the community, and it's all thanks to your support. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Chief had a question just sent to me. I know we had readied our personnel for assistance if needed in Texas and in North Carolina. Can you give an update on that?
Yes, sir. So as you all know, our nation suffers through some catastrophic events here in the last couple of days relative to flooding. The Georgia Emergency Management Agency, GIMA, has reached out to us and asked us to roster a team to potentially send support to some of those regions. We have rostered a team as of yesterday. They have yet to reach back out to us and say that, yes, you are good to go. As you can imagine, some of the locations, we are beyond the rescue phase. We're in the recovery phase. So it's very difficult. They're very taxing on those responders in those local jurisdictions. So they've reached out across the country into the state of Georgia. As you all know, we staff and manage a Georgia search and rescue team. So our team is rostered and ready to go. We are waiting word from GIMA as to whether or not we will go. Typically, what happens oftentimes is once they look around the country and see what resources are available, they may find something a little bit closer that can get there a little bit quicker. So, but we are ready to go. At a moment's notice, they have asked for a five-day deployment. Typically, when we deploy, for this case, we'll send an 11-man team. They will be deployed for five days. They will be self-sufficient for five days and operate at the direction of the incident commanders on the ground. This is not uncommon, but it also will not be uncommon if they call us back and say, y'all can stand down. We have the other resources we need. So I was hoping to keep the mayor advised as we move forward, but as of right now, we're in a holding pattern.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. My last item, mayor's resolution. This is up for discussion about the travel policy for members of Columbus Council. Counselor Tucker is sponsoring the resolution with a $3,500 limit for out-of-county travel.
All right, there is a motion to approve in a second. To the motion, Mayor Protem?
I plan to support it. I would like to ask council's consideration to add a couple of qualifiers in there. When we have somebody go out, usually they identify information. They bring it back, and then they share it with council. And I would like to, when a trip is requested or information's put in to take a trip, just identify the subject matter that you're interested in and then bring that back. And also, I'd like to ask council to consider a non-transferable language. And basically, what that would mean is if a counselor is not going to be able to go, they're not allowed to transfer that funds to somebody else. We all pick trips we want to go on. Raising it to $3,500 probably gives you two, maybe three trips a year. So I don't think that would be out of the ordinary to add those two amendments. So I would like to add the, identify the subject matter and then add the non-transferable language in there. I'd like to ask council to support that.
Is that in form of a motion?
Yes, sir. Where do you see that language?
Well, let's.
The city attorney, could you help us identify the non-transferable language in this resolution? If it's already in there, then I'll withdraw my motion.
It says nobody will be reimbursed more than $3,500, but if you want to clarify it, you can about non-transferability. It's, they're not going to get more than $3,500 for, per individual. So it's just a clarification is all it would be.
Okay, so then, councilor, just.
I just want to make sure everybody's in agreement with that.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Well, in walking through this, I think we're already establishing that. I do know that the prior ordinance that we put together does have requirements in it of reporting. So that's not a, I don't think that's an issue. The capping of $3,500 essentially is doing exactly that. You're just, instead of going to a council member and asking them to, you know, if you're not going to travel, can I use your funds? You're really capping it. So it is essentially doing the same thing. You're just capping it at that point. I don't, you know, with the cap being in there, I don't see the need to, or it would even arise that you would go up and ask another council member because essentially, that's, it's really the same. You could do it either way. I mean, basically, is the way I look at it. It might be a little higher increase, but with the cost of living and the accommodation costs, food and travel and all that, all that stuff, we know all that stuff has increased over time. And I think it's been several years now since we've talked about it. Mayor Protem, I don't know if you feel the same way about that, but if that would, you know, to me, it kind of satisfies it. Am I missing something on that?
Well, in my research on the travel over the last several years, really, no travel has exceeded $3,200, I think, was the number. And the lowest has been around $1,200. So you could, in effect, take three trips. One person could go on three different trips with this limit. So I just don't see any need to allow funds to be transferred. I mean, we budget, I think, ten-thousand dollars for this line item, and there's not enough funds there for a counselor. Each counselor would take a trip, really, if you boil it down to that. So I don't see any problem with putting something in there that would say this is non-transferable and then identify the subject matter. So we just clarify it, clarify it that way. Well, if we increase the budget at some point, yeah. Yeah, just leave it the budget like it is. I just want to protect future counselors and the funds of the city from, you know, we're all not going to be here forever, so it's, it's just a, it's a safety-catch-all kind of phrase. I don't have a problem with raising it to thirty-five, but I would like those two in there. So I would appreciate the support of council to do that. It saves the taxpayers' funds and restricts, identifies the subject matter that we're going to be coming back and sharing with the public and shows that we're guardians of the funds for travel.
Okay, is it to this subject, Counselor Crabbe?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you mind a caveat to the non-transferable? That it, that if, that the counselor wanting, the two counselors wanting to transfer the funds would come before this body and get approval from the body? Because I think there are some situations that may arise that I think it would be a benefit to this body and also to the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, that this person would go to an event and represent us and bring us back valuable information. And I would hate for us to, you know, cut off our nose despite our face in that kind of a situation.
I appreciate that, counselor. I don't, I don't see where a counselor is required to come and request approval from council for travel.
No, I'm talking about for the non, for the non-transferable part. You know, we, then we would be in a position where we would know how much funds that have been paid out that year. And if there are, we would know that we wouldn't want to go over the ten-thousand. But if we're not even close and we, and that person could benefit, and not just that person, but that person bringing back information to this body and we implement it to a benefit to the citizens, I think that we should have that opportunity. And so I understand, you know, I don't think that it should just be random non-transferable. I mean, random transferable. I do agree with your non-transferable. But I do, would like to put some kind of caveat in there that in special situations, they can come before this body and we can approve a non-transferable, a transfer of funds to that person for special exceptions.
I see what you're saying, and let's get clarification from the city attorney and then try to work that language in here.
We can work the language in, identify the subject matter and report back and make the funds non-transferable among counselors without express council approval. We can do that.
Put that in the form of a motion, Mayor.
Okay. All right.
I second that motion.
So the counselor Allen has withdrawn the first motion.
Right.
De facto withdrawn it by substituting this other amendment. All right. There is a second to it, so any other discussion on the amendment? Okay. Hang on. Hang on, trying to get you on there. There you go.
So the thirty-five-hundred dollars, number one, I support, because I believe that professional development is very critical for each and every one of us, but I do have a question. The thirty-five-hundred dollars, it does not apply to any mandatory training by a state or anything. This is something totally separate. Am I correct?
That's right.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Tucker, to the motion.
I'll wait until-
All right, Madam Clerk, do you need?
Please. Thank you, sir. With this new resolution, I don't see anything where it says that a counselor would have to come and get approval. Is that still going to be in place, Mr. City Attorney?
Well, if we add this amendment, the only time counselors will come here for approval specifically is if they want to transfer among two counselors some additional funding.
If one counselor had exhausted their funds that was allotted at thirty-five-hundred, they could then get a transfer from another counselor if the city council votes to allow it to happen.
I think what the clerk is pointing out is that council needs, is council going to approve each time a trip comes up? I think that's what we have been doing in the past. And at that point, they could then identify the subject matter as well. So that's a good point. Could we make that a part of the same motion?
I would respectfully ask if we could. It kind of takes it out of the clerk's hands. I would appreciate that.
All right, so there's a motion and a second to require council approval. Require council approval. Counselor Chambers?
So how much money have we earmarked for training, ten thousand? So we would have to do an amendment. Am I correct?
No, it still stays the same.
But if we are allocating or approving thirty-five-hundred dollars per council member, that's thirty-five-thousand dollars.
No, it's thirty, it's thirty-five-hundred, keeping the same budget. For the most part, myself and Counselor Huff have been the only one that traveled.
But what if everyone decided they wanted to travel?
Well, if you want to travel, then it'd still be almost under that ten thousand, so.
I think that's why it's important, what the amendment just means, so that we understand, the whole body understands the amount of money that has been allocated so far.
Yeah, I think we budgeted ten thousand, and what we're agreeing to here is identify the subject matter, get council approval for the travel, and funds are non-transferable without council approval.
But we won't exceed the ten thousand.
No.
So once we hit that, that's it.
That's right.
Got it. Thank you.
And something I could include with the request is to provide council with a balance with that request.
That could be done administratively. That doesn't have to be part of it. All right, so we have a motion and a second. That, Madam Clerk, read back, because we had three different items, and one was to bring back the information, one was to-
Counsel approval.
Get council approval for any transfers of funding between councils.
And the trip, and for the trip.
Yes, sir, and very quickly, I just wanted to provide information provided by the Finance Director. She has reminded me that we have five thousand for registration and ten thousand for travel, so.
Two separate pots.
Yes, ma'am. So the first motion that we have, the motion was made by Mayor Pro Tim Allen and seconded by Counselor Crabbe. That was to identify the subject matter that the training is going to be held on, and that would be where the counselor would also come back and share that information and to clarify the language, to make sure that this list is non-transferable. And then we had another motion to where it would-
Require counsel.
It would require counsel to approve the, excuse me, to approve the travel. And that was done by Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Counselor Davis.
Okay, so there's two separate addendums.
I believe they added.
Or they just kept piling on?
Yes, sir.
We'll just, we'll go with that final amendment as a motion and a second. Any further discussion about that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that, the amendment is approved. Now the resolution itself for the travel? Motion and a second to approve the updating of the policy. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I just, I wanted to say thank you to the counselors, because myself and Counselor Huff have been very engaged. The conference that I'm going on on Thursday is a Counsel Tucker bank account expense, and it has already been paid for out of Navy Federal Credit Union. And I'm just being funny, but every time I go to these conferences, I bring information back to this council board. First started with American Rescue Plan dollars, me attending and getting that information and understanding what the Treasury guidance actually said, what we could spend the money for. I made a little joke earlier about how many people know about E-911 besides police officers? Not many. Those are things that we talk about. Where when Hurricane Helena came through, trying to build a network, and my background is IT, where we can transfer our 911 systems over to another coast in Georgia or even working on the MOA, MOU, to go to other states. That's what we're doing right now, ACCG and NACO. Those are the conversations that we're having. So I'm not going and just goofing off. I'm going and bringing back information and trying to implement things that will save not only Muskogee County folks, but Telfair County, Tombs County, because I represent all one hundred and forty, fifty-nine counties for ACCG Board of Management. And now every state has the NACO Board of Directors, so executive person. So it's not about me. It really is about the citizens. And I don't mind sharing. I think I share too much on social media. But I get this information from NACO and ACCG and River Valley Regional Commission, which you all put me on. So now I have to go to another thing, but it, I don't mind serving. That's why I joined the military for service, and in the Air Force, they say, "Service before self." And I have really echoed that core value since the age of nineteen, and really before that, because that's how my grandparents raised me. But I appreciate you all for supporting myself and Counselor Huff, and maybe we can get Counselor Chambers to take over that GMA side, because I'm not going to that.
All right.
That item has passed, Mayor, and that's the end of our agenda there. Thank you, sir.
All right. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're still on the city attorney's agenda, I want to bring up a matter that we discussed last week in dealing with what a majority of this council, if not all, agreed that it was excessive fees, legal costs. I would like to know the status of where that invoice is right now.
As far as I know, it's been processed.
City Manager?
We can verify that.
I need to know now.
She's looking it up.
Okay. Okay, well, while she's looking that up, I'm going to move forward. Look, we, I guess on short notice, we had to deliberate or to think about this matter, which since I've been on council, it's the first time that I know of that the situation came up where an individual or employees are allowed to go get their own legal counsel and then come back. And depending on the determination where it's at, that the city would be responsible to pay those legal costs. Most of the time that we're dealing with legal matters, you've got probably twenty-five, fifty, I've heard at times a hundred lawsuits against this city. People don't realize, a lot of lawsuits against this city. Anybody, anything and everything comes up, you, it's hard to imagine. But most of the time, there's a process involved in all that. It goes to court or there's settlements involved. There's things of that nature. It goes through a process, and yes, there's costs associated. And most of the time, you don't question those invoices, because it is what it is. That's, that's the process. That's the standard. But when you have a situation that does not go through a process, that all of a sudden just kind of goes away, even though there may have been a letter or letters written or calls made. But that's pretty much the extent. There was no other course of action that was taking place. And then you get a bill of forty-five-thousand dollars. I think that's a matter that we have to question, and it's our, it's our responsibility to do that in order to protect the city and the citizens. And yes, I believe it sets a very dangerous precedence. I know that there were some that questioned that, if it did set a precedence. It does set a precedence, because when you open that door, there's no stopping. Once you open the door and make that decision, anybody in the future can keep coming back and throwing out, you've already set precedence. And what we didn't talk about, what we didn't talk about, it wasn't a question of, it was not a question of paying the invoice, okay? We know that there's responsibility there. We know that their Court of Appeals has said that's what you got to do, okay? That's not an issue. The issue is the excessiveness of it, and I think we do have a right to question that. And we should question that if we believe it. Now, if a majority of this council believed it, then we should question. But what we did not talk about in this council meeting, which I want to bring up for reconsideration, is the remedies. Nobody talked about the remedies. There are remedies on books, and it was just stated, basically stated that it's going to cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars if we don't make this decision. That's not true. That's not true. That's very misleading. Yeah, hypothetically, worst-case scenario, if it goes through appeals and all the way to Supreme Court, yeah, all the battles, but that's not going to happen. The reality of it is, in my understanding, after going back and doing some due diligence and studying it, that a judge can make that determination if it's excessive fees or not. A judge is qualified to do it. They do it all the time. They do it in every case, even all these legal suits and civil suits and things we go through, they do it all the time. And they check that to see if it's excessive. So there's no reason that we should not have done that, okay? Now, if somebody does think it's going to be excessive costs, it was not stated, and it should have been stated at this table, that we have a remedy. We have recourse. We can file a grievance. The Court of Appeals, the Supreme Court, gives us the right, if we believe that, that we can file a grievance. And if we don't want to file a grievance, we can take it to another step and do an arbitrary process. Now, you would have to have two, the two parties agree to that. But that is the reality of, it's just not, here's the invoice, pay it or else. There are remedies to this. And I believe if at anything, if that invoice has already been satisfied, which is why I'm asking, do we know?
Yes, that check was issued on June twenty-seventh.
Okay, well, then what I'm going to do this morning is ask for reconsideration to make a motion that we file a grievance through the process of the Court of Appeals. We have the right to do that, and let them determine that.
I'm going to have to say something, Mayor.
And you know, the city attorney, you know I'm right.
Well, the city attorney is not right, and I will explain it.
I've already talked to him, and I'm right on the matter.
You're not.
The city attorney, do you have?
Yeah, I'd be glad to explain it. This is a matter of case law. The Supreme Court and the Court of Appeals have said that if the official acting in their official capacity is required to hire outside counsel to assert a legal position, the local government attorney cannot, which we have in this case, because he or she has a conflict. And two, the official is successful in asserting his or her position. That's what we got in this case. Court of Appeals has said it over and over since 2014. Georgia Supreme Court said it, 2001, that's when the law was first laid down. We're not bringing you fees in a resolution to pay that are unreasonable. The fees were looked at by our office. They were reasonable with the market. The court has not said that a local government body can question the fees. The fees are paid as an expense of government operation, according to the court. So the fees that you paid were properly brought here under the case law. And if you try to go back on what you've done, you're going to have to go file another action in court to undo it, spend more legal fees, if that's the way you want to go, but I certainly don't recommend that. The fees are proper under the law, and you're going to probably get more of this type of fee request, depending on how the investigation ends up.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You're right on that, and that's why I'm making this point. You didn't say anything that I just said, okay? I just said we got a responsibility to pay it because of what the Court of Appeals has said in the Supreme Court. That's not an issue. The issue is excessive fees, and we do have a remedy. And that remedy, and you know this, is a grievance. You can file a grievance, or you can go through the arbitrary process.
You do not have a remedy as a government body.
This is straight from the bar, the state bar that deals with this matter. You have a right to file a grievance.
If you want to file an action in the state bar against the attorney, that's an individual matter. That's not a governmental entity decision.
Are you listening to what I'm saying? Okay, that's what I'm stating, that you can file a grievance. Or you can go to an arbit, through an arbitrary process.
You can do that as an individual, but not spend taxpayer funds on it.
You don't have to. You can just file a grievance, and, you know, in the future, if anybody else gets put in this position, they will know the situation, and they will be able to question it as well. And from my understanding, not a lot of attorneys like to have grievances filed against them. They don't like it. Matter of fact, they avoid it like the plague. And like I said, if this body agrees that those fees were excessive, which I do, you had a lawyer that said it right here.
I'm recommending that you not challenge the fees, but if you-
It's not a challenge. It's a grievance.
Wait a minute, let me finish. If you, as an individual, want to go file a grievance against a certain attorney with a state bar, you're free to do so.
Well, I make a resolu, I, I make a motion that we put a resolution together and we file a grievance with the state bar, that we believe those fees are excessive, and they'll make the determination, not us, but you cannot tell me, and I saw the invoice that came over here, and you had, like I said, you had a lawyer that said the same thing. We feel like those fees are excessive. Now, what we're asking you and your office to do is to state that at the state level through the state bar.
No, sir, I do not recommend that, and our office will not do that. You can file an individual grievance if you want to. As Glenn Davis, you have a right to file a grievance at the state bar. I do not recommend that this body pass any resolution claiming fees are excessive when the courts have said you've got to pay them.
What is the damages involved here? What, you're making a determination if we make a decision that it's going to cost us something. What is going to cost us to file a grievance as a council?
It's going to cost you a lawyer fee, a lot of expense to go file something that's going to be contested. I can tell you that right now.
So what's the danger in doing that? You, I mean, you're making it sound like we've-
It's more taxpayer, more taxpayer expense. If you do it as an individual, there's no taxpayer expense. So I'm recommending you not spend tax money to pursue this grievance.
Well, what does your office do?
We do everything under the charter to represent you as a body.
If we ask you to file a grievance, why can't your office file a grievance?
No, sir. Hang on a second. We're getting a little bit off the track. What that office does is it responds to requests for information from this council and from the mayor as to whether or not it's a prudent legal activity. They factor in the cost on that. So I think what the, we have a city attorney who we pay to take a look at these, these issues. There are going to be occasions when we disagree. Now, there is a method, if you feel strongly enough, what, if I heard that just correctly, there's a method that you can use to get that grievance filed, and it wouldn't, according to you, it wouldn't cost anything. So when our attorney tells us that their recommendation is not to proceed down that road, I think it's a, I think that's the dangerous precedent to ignore our attorney.
Well, may I respectfully disagree with you? That's taken a very, kind of a cowardly approach to this whole matter. And you know and I know, if an individual, if an individual- And you know, and I know, if an individual, if an individual files a grievance, that doesn't hold any weight. The body of this council holds weight. And if this body believes in it, there's no reason that you can't send a resolution to them that we have believed that this is excessive fees.
But I also know that you have a tendency to use words, whether you mean them or not, when you're not getting something viewed the exact way that you wanted to.
Coming from your seat, excuse me.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just telling you. I, I, there's a litany of incidents where you've done that. And we don't publicize them. But I will tell you that our attorney has told this group, has advised this group not to proceed along those lines. There is an avenue. If you want to proceed it, you can. But that's, that's not something that you should, that we should have the entire group involved in that particular incident.
Well, Mayor, I believe you're wrong. I talked to the state bar. I've talked to several attorneys on this. I've talked to judges on this, and they all agree. I don't know what I'm missing out on. I'm not a lawyer, and certainly you're not a lawyer.
No, I'm not. That's why I take the advice of one.
Well, we don't always get the correct advice, and we can make decisions and deliberate ourselves. Okay? And that's, that's a God's honest truth.
And you are free to go get a second opinion, counselor. But this office and this city attorney is not going to file a grievance against another lawyer whose fees have been authorized by appellate court decisions.
You want to say that again?
Yes, sir. You are free to file a grievance as Glenn Davis, an individual without spending tax money. But this office is not going to spend tax money to file a grievance against a lawyer where we know the fees are authorized by case law.
Am, am I hearing this right? The authority of the charter gives the council, if by resolution we ask you to do that, are you telling me you're not going to do it?
No, sir. We, we've got a conflict in this case anyway. We're not going to do it. If this body, six counselors on this body, want to go hire a lawyer to file a grievance against another lawyer and spend tax money, we do not recommend that. You can do it. We don't recommend.
And you got a conflict, but you're recommending paying for it.
No, sir. We are recommending paying the fees under the case law. They are not excessive.
Mayor, I yield to my fellow council members.
All right. Counselor Hickey?
I'd like to second the motion. I agree with you, Councilman Davis. Uh, I was, you know, my thoughts on the fees, uh, I felt that they were pretty excessive. I did my own research and, uh, uh, and learned that a grievance can be filed. And so, uh, I would like to second the motion, Ms. Mayor, and, uh, ask that, you know, our colleagues, uh, that all agree, you know, uh, get on board with us to do this. And we'll, we'll let, uh, it all go to the, uh, Georgia bar, uh, uh, for them to have some say in what was done there. Thank you.
Counselor Anker?
Yeah, I, I, I respect our city attorney and, and his recommendations, and whether I agree or I disagree on this one. And, uh, I think if the body chooses to vote, uh, you know, we, we did the right thing first. We voted. We paid the bill. We paid the invoice. We, we deliberated about it for an hour. We, we all went back and did a lot more homework. It came fast, it went fast. And I think a vote is in order. And I, I, we asked the question, what does it cost? And I think to file the appeal the way that Glenn has outlined it, um, is important. And, and the, it, it saves lo, uh, money in the long run if you are paying attention to the detail and what we're paying for. So I think a vote is in order.
All right. Thank you, sir. Counselor Kogel?
Um, well, if the, uh, city attorney is not going to, uh, proceed, I, I think it would be beneficial for, before voting on this, to know if we have to go out and hire a separate attorney, than to know what that cost was, is going to be to, um, to file that grievance ahead of time.
And that's exactly what you're going to have to do. We'll have to find another attorney. Or you, as a body, if you want to pass this measure, we'll have to go find another attorney to file a grievance.
But that's because your office is conflicted in responding to that.
We're conflicted out totally, yes, sir. These fees are reasonable. And we brought them to council to be paid, and they've been processed.
But in terms of the representation, uh, because if there's a motion.
Well, that's why there's a conflict.
Yep. Counselor Cram?
As you read the, the law or the appeal, um, you said that you, you used the word required.
Mm-hmm.
Can you read that sentence again?
This is the court's language. This is the leading case from 2001. We have held that a local government must pay a local official's attorney fees when the official acting in his official capacity is required to hire outside counsel to assert a legal position the local government attorney cannot assert because he or she has a conflict, which we have, arising from his or her representation of the local government. And two, when the official is successful in asserting his or her position, which we have in this case.
Okay, when is an individual required to hire an attorney to defend? I'm, I would think that that would be after charges are made.
Not necessarily, no, ma'am.
Not necessarily?
It can be a target of the investigation, which we had in this case.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Hickey?
Um, I think what we should do is, uh, let's just reach out to an attorney. Uh, I mean, we may could get this done pro bono. I mean, we won't know. You know, I mean, it's, it's being assumed that we're going to have to pay an outside attorney since our attorney office is conflicted on this matter. So let's just reach out, see? And then, uh, if there's a cost involved, let's see what that cost is. But I just think that, that when we allow attorneys to bring us excessive fees, and first of all, I don't think anybody on this council body even saw the invoice. I know I didn't see it. And what the hours added up to. I mean, we presented with, with, with the amount. We said that by law, we got to pay it. Uh, it was a five-five vote, not a six-four. It was a five-five tiebreaker by, by the mayor, uh, to agree to pay it. And so, uh, uh, in my opinion, I just think that, you know, what's fair to the citizens is that we make sure we get this right. It's what's fair to the citizen. Because what is not fair is that we got attorneys sending us these outrageous bills, and then we're saying, okay, the court said we got to pay it. No, I, I mean, if it's excessive, we need to inquire. We need to ask questions. We need to get other people involved that we need to get involved. I think that's being a good steward of the taxpayers' dollar. You know, that we are fighting for the taxpayers. You know, not that, and, and if it's, like I said, we could reach out to some attorneys to see what they filed a grievance for as pro bono. It don't cost us anything. And, and I know sitting on this council body, there's several people up here that know attorneys here locally. They'll be glad to do that if, if, you know, if, if, if it comes to that. And then if there's a fee involved, I can't see anything so excessive that, you know, the taxpayer would be upset that we're trying to fight to make sure that it don't happen again. I mean, that's, you know, it, it's, it's, it's not a real hard process. But I rest with that. I agree with that. Thank you.
Counselor Anker?
Yeah, the, 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 the fees involved, that she was not re, uh, uh, asserted to answer any questions. She was not asked to come. There was no reason for it to go this far. And, and the fees and, and the values to serve did not align. And I think now it is the question of how much. So you, you made the, I'm done. Thank you.
So what is the pleasure, counsel? I mean, I think Counselor Hickey said to move forward with just checking with outside attorneys.
Yes, uh, to move forward, uh, uh, to, uh, see if we could find an attorney that will be willing to represent us, whether it's pro bono or whatever their fee may be.
I think.
Counselor Cram?
I think this motion and this vote is premature before we find out that, that information. Because if we know the expense that it's going to cost, and, and that expense exceeds what we feel is, um, over the regular costs that we should have paid, then we are not being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. So we, so before we vote on this, I think we need to know the cost of, of this action since the city attorney has advised us that we cannot use their services. Then, and we have to find, you know, outside services, we better find out how much it's going to cost before we proceed.
And I can tell you, if it's an Atlanta attorney, the range will be five hundred to eight hundred dollars is a good estimate per hour. You get a lawyer here, the, the range is about three hundred to six hundred.
All right, well, Counselor Hickey, you withdraw in a second.
Yes, sir. Okay, Ms. Mayor, I, I withdraw the second so that we could just research and see if we could find an attorney here locally that would be willing to assist us, and to see whether or not it could be pro bono or whatever their fee may be. And I agree with Councilman Cram. Let's get that information and come back. But I do say that we need to do something about this. We need to move forward and do something about this, so that it don't happen anymore.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. No, that's, uh, I don't have a problem with that. I think we need to have this discussion because I've said it before, once you open this door, you set a dangerous precedence. And my gut feelings tell me this is not the last invoice we're going to get. So where does it stop? Is the next one going to be fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty? Where does it stop? I think sometimes you just have to take a stand and say, no, that's not right. And if we need to look into it, it's my understanding that a simple resolution from this body and file a grievance with the bar, that's not going to take a lot of brain power. It's not going to take a lot of time writing a letter. It's a short letter. You file a grievance. When you file a grievance, they take a look at this kind of stuff. It's just not that it just sits there in a file. They take a look at it. That's what a grievance process, if you've ever been through it before, that's what a mediation or grievance process is all about. Now, arbitrariness is different, is binding. It's binding, but you would have to have the two parties to agree to it, which I doubt. Any lawyer that's invoicing you, and it's excessive, they're not going to, you know, give up the goods. There's not going to, there's not going to do that unless they will agree to go through that process. There is a process and a remedy, like I said. And I think we need to do it because I believe, and I think a majority in the conversation from our last council meeting agreed that the fees were excessive. And, uh, if we, I don't have any problem having somebody take a look at it. Normally, it's a judge, but to have, depending on, I mean, who makes that determination of the council or a lawyer and who gives you that advice. That's all subjective. I mean, you got attorneys that agree on different sides all over. I mean, that's what, that's how it all works. And, uh, you know, but at, at the end of the day, if we believe that, then if we don't file a grievance, I don't believe that we're representing the citizens appropriately, and at least we're taking a stance. And even look, it's not saying that you might not be right. You might not be right. That's not what it's saying. It's saying that we believe that this needs to be taken a look at. At least if it happens again somewhere else in the state, it's on the radar. And people will know. But sometimes you have to take a stand for that. It's just good business. It's a good practice. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Counselor Hickey?
And Ms. Mayor, I once, uh, I, I would just like to request, I don't think, like I said a moment ago, any of us got a copy of the invoice. So, uh, um, Madam City, City Manager, Deputy City Manager, can we get, can we, can you provide all the council, uh, a, a copy of that invoice from, uh, the attorney? Or it, a city attorney, if, if you can provide us a copy with that invoice?
You should, you should have it in finance, but we can provide it if needed.
We'll send that out. Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Anker?
Yeah, I'd like to thank, uh, Counselor Davis for bringing this up and having the conversation. Uh, looking at the state law, Mr. City Attorney, you know, it does say that it's required, the person is required to hire outside counsel to assert a legal position to the local government. And there was never an opportunity for anyone to assert a legal position. Otherwise, we may have heard from that attorney in Atlanta for the forty-five thousand dollars that we ended up writing the check for. Um, I would lastly ask Clifton, uh, City Attorney, if it would be appropriate that he reach out and, and ask him after we paid in full, uh, before we pursue another option. Maybe he wants to come back and say, I'll do this. Is, is that even an option? You know, and, and that'd be up, up to you in, in your court, if you would like to make that phone call, and that's not a conflict of trying to defend the body of counsel.
We don't mind calling the attorney at all and asking if he'll cut his fees, but, you know.
But I think.
I got a feeling I know what the answer is.
Well, you may know what the answer is, but we're going to research what our options are towards the appeals.
Your options are you can go out and find another attorney to file a grievance.
We're going to research that.
Which we do not recommend.
We understand.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Anker. All right. Yes, sir. Counselor Hickey?
You know, and one of the things that concerns me also, and, and, and Mr. City Attorney, I'm speaking to you on this. Um, you know, I understand, uh, the idea of conflicting out because of, of your role here with, uh, the city government. But what concerns me is when I start hearing language like, I'm not going to do something. Nobody's going to tell me what to do.
Counselor, I don't know that that's what you were saying.
But that's, but, but that's, that's, that's how, that's how it was delivered a moment ago. And, and, and I, and, and he, and, and I just said, to his credit, he did say that he's, he's conflicted out. But let it be that, you know, because, you know, this council body has the authority to call for a resolution with six votes. And if it's something that his office can't do, and he went on to explain that you can, would have to hire somebody on the outside, and he don't recommend that, and that's fine. But when I hear what, you know, I've heard that, that kind of, that, that language before since I've been on this council. You know, nobody's going to tell me what to do. I, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I don't have to listen, you know. We, it should never have to come to that because we're, we're all the one here on this council.
I agree. And I don't think I've ever heard, I, I may have been absent, but I don't think I've ever heard those words used. I, I understand where you're coming from, and I understand that when we're discussing some sensitive issues, that there are going to be some differences of opinion. And that's fine. And I agree with everything you said. I think that, uh, up, up to that point, I, I don't think I've ever heard those words used. And I think it's, it, we have to be careful saying it because the public goes home and they think that they said it. Well, we're, we're not going to get into a public debate, I don't think, right now about he said, she said. But your point is well made.
Okay, and, and I just, and I just want to say that. And, and like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm stating that with no disrespect to the city attorney, but I just think that this council body, we, we have always got to extend the olive branch across the aisle of respect to our fellow council people and to our other city employees. We got to do that, you know. And, 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 and we may disagree with what's being said, but it never should come to, 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 to that tone. So with that, Ms. Mayor, I yield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm gonna read this quickly. The Georgia State Bar handles grievances against attorneys through a formal process involving initial review, investigation, and potential disciplinary action. The process begins with filing of a grievance, which is in the review by the State Bar's Office of General Counsel. If the grievance warrants further investigation, the attorney is notified and given an opportunity to respond. Depending on the outcome, the grievance may be dismissed, result in a confidential letter of admonition, or proceed a formal hearing before the State Disciplinary Board. It gives you a remedy, and they look at this and determine it, and I think it's the right thing for us to do. To have a body do that, the state gives us a remedy. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Madam Clerk. Hang on. There you are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, I did want to state the motions and the action that was taken. The original motion made by Counselor Davis was requesting counsel to reconsider the action that was taken on June seventeenth regarding paying the legal fees. And, and as the conversation continued, we did not get a second to that one. The next motion was to, for a resolution to be put together to file a grievance with the Court of Appeals due to the, what council believes is excessive attorney's fees. That second came from Counselor Hickey, and after the discussion continued, then Counselor Hickey withdrew his second. Just for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We'll move into the public agenda. And, uh, again, we'll remind our participants that you'll have five minutes uh, to, uh, to present your, your thoughts. And if it can't be done in, in five minutes, you can come back at the end of the meeting to finish up with another three. You'll just need to let us know before you leave the podium. Uh, I'll try to notify you, come to the center podium, I'll try to notify you when you've got one minute left, because I don't think we have a timer up there. Uh, and, um, all you have to do is state your name and, and, uh, your residence. Not your street residence, but just the city of residence. Versus Ms. Teresa Elamine regarding political shenanigans, staff appreciation, and uplifting the East Winton campaign. Yes, ma'am, we'll do that. So the first one will be Mr. Marvin Broadwater Senior regarding attorney fees paid for by taxpayers. Hang on, we'll get it turned on. Did you? Yes, sir. Got it.
Tess. My name is Marvin Broadwater Senior, and I live in the three one nine zero nine zip code. And I will, I will request my extra three minutes now, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Madam Deputy City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, City Administration, City Staff, and citizens of this great city. Before I get started, I would just like to thank all of you for your continued service to our community. I have committed myself to informing you when you do well, and in that same vein, to inform, to informing you when I believe you could have made maybe a better decision. I must say, you have worked together to push for new pools, splash pads, capital projects, and I definitely see a vast improvement in our city streets and roads in this awesome and great community. And I am certain other citizens appreciate it as much as I do. However, there are a few items that are troubling me this morning, and I honestly believe need to be addressed, such as your willingness to readily approve retainer fees, lawyer fees, and for city employees accused of crimes. As it, as if the city council can do it, but when an employee decides to hire an attorney to protect their reputation of accusations from unstat, unstatuated allegations of committing a crime, it's a no-no. Let me be a little more specific and give you a detailed example. During the last council meeting, you all discussed the issue of paying a retainer and lawyer fees for a city employee accused of wrongdoing for almost forty-five minutes. It was stated by one counselor, and I quote, "If we start opening the door, where does it stop across the board? It's highway robbery. I mean, really," unquote. In another outburst, a counselor stated, "It seems like a scam to me." Another counselor joined in on the melee and jumped on the bandwagon, as they stated, and I quote, "When these fees come in at such a high level, it's very concerning. Whether or not our city government or our taxpayers are being taken advantage of," unquote. To me, it is as if we have selected amnesia. Because approximately two years ago, this city, the city, the council, this council, hired a law firm to investigate a finance, our finance department, after a misguided quote of forty-five million dollars was set in motion and planted in the mind of our citizen for an internal audit. The law firm charged the city an astonishing nine hundred and ninety dollars per hour. The final bill costing the taxpayer a whopping four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. During the final discussion of payment of this costly invoice, there was no outcry of highway robbery, of implications, of assertions of a scam. We, and I mean we, the taxpayers, paid, paid. I would have liked to have heard a counselor say, wait, isn't this too much money? Can we see the invoice, as was stated during the last council meeting? We must be careful when we mention words like corruption or the mismanagement of funds. Accusations are like, are like indicting a ham sandwich to a grand jury. In other words, anyone can accuse, but can you prove? This council and our taxpayers should have learned something from the last fiasco. As we, the taxpayer, paid out four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to find out what we already knew and are now faced with the possibility of another alarming lawsuit currently in the starting blocks. Even more recently, the city hired a lawyer at five hundred dollars per hour to represent a few city counselors acting in their official capacity as counselors. The ordeal in question lawyer charged the employee five hundred and fifty dollars per hour. I am for the freedom of speech, as you may be able to discern from the cap that adorns my head. While I am committed to helping you identify problems as I see them going forward, I am also committed to assisting you with resolution. It's very easy. You change your charter. You change your charter so that when a contract is done, when an employee signs a contract, they either hire locally or they hire from a city that's comparable size to Columbus. That's where you're going to get the same fees from. When you go to Miami, when you go to Atlanta, when you go to Philadelphia, I come back, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt, I appreciate it. All right. All right, and next is Ms. Teresa. Just a moment, Ms. Elamine, Counselor Davis.
Yeah, I, uh, it's obvious sometimes people don't have all the pieces of the puzzle, but comments can be made, it's very misleading. I think when you start breaking down numbers and understanding the reality of the cost, you'll see a little different picture on it. Um, we had a attorney that came to us that we, when we initiated investigation, the, the first investigation ever in the city since I've been on council, and there was a reason behind it. Very, very complex matter, and we just came off of fraud. Eight million dollars stolen from the city with a matter. And then we had another situation that we had an attorney come in and tell us that you've got a problem. You've got a real problem, and you need to address it. At that point, we didn't know exactly the depth of it, but we had to look into it. The recommendation didn't come from this council, it came from the attorney in two phases. First phase was twenty thousand dollars to go in and do an assessment. He came back and said, you've got a problem. What do we do? The next recommendation was to go further into it, where the law firm became a quarterback and then hire an external uh, actuary or, or, uh, uh, compliance entity to come in and take a look at it. In further review, they came back and made further recommendations that they wanted to go to other departments and look into it that were attached to the matter, subject matter that was being investigated. It needed to happen because this body was concerned about fraud. We did not choose to go to law enforcement, we went to a body that we felt could go in there and give us a clear picture, an, an independent party to come and give us a clear picture because it was so complex and over the head of a lot of our, number one, our internal auditor's office, which there was, seemed to be a conflict at that time, and things stated. And two, you didn't just want to go out and bring law enforcement in there that, that would basically put the fear of God in, in you and not know where it goes. So it was the right thing to do, and yes, it costs money. The people that we used, a former U.S. attorney was the right person to come in, their investigative attorneys to come in and do the job. They had to have a support, support staff, and then hired, recommended making additional, uh, uh, needs that needed to address the situation. Now, they gave a report. They gave a clear report. There was further requests that were made, not by this body, but by the mayor, the city manager, and others that added to additional costs, more cost on top of that. So when you start breaking it all down, that ultimately led to an investigation that was not called for by this body, it was approved by this, by our mayor and the city manager, and look where we're at now, and we're having to deal with these issues one by one. And it's going to get more expensive. I'm just telling you that. But this council did not create that. But the main thing people need to understand, it was our duty and responsibility to determine there was no fraud, and we did that. The other things that we worked through, we worked through that. But we had a chance to move forward and to move on, but we didn't, and here we are today. And that's the truth and reality of it, and that, that cost is, is something that was associated, we knew that cost upfront, and we knew what it was going to take. But what was being explained to us, this council? And I could go through it and explain it to the public real easy, what was being told us. But it was a problem that needed to be addressed, we did the right thing.
Well, and it's interesting that this is now being retried out here in the public when we still have investigations going on. Uh, and, and I will point out that had that, had the auditor finished her report, had she been allowed to finish that report and submit it, we would not have had all of the challenges we've had. She was, she was stopped by a number of different individuals, and once this litigation gets all passed, I really look forward to being able to share with the public exactly who helped stop this, who drug their feet, and who had the, uh, who had the initiative and the, and the desire to try to stop this as it went. We have folks that are passionate about their opinions. So passionate that they're going to tell you that those opinions are fact. I can tell you that you're going to get, if you went around this, this group, you're going to get about three or four different versions of that entire episode. Bottom line, as far as this thing went on for two years, because we couldn't get an audit finished. We had to go find somebody that was going to take a look at that information, that is true. And, and, and your inability to stay quiet while I'm talking demonstrates who is not being honest. You're not being honest. So we're going to move forward with the agenda because we're going to continue to get opinion dressed as fact. So we're going to move on, and Ms. Teresa Elamine, you now have the floor for five minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, council members, uh, and staff. Uh, I am Teresa Elamine, who likes to be called Mama T. Um, we'll talk more about the political shenanigans. Uh, but first, let me just appreciate the staff. Uh, on my way here, I was having a hard time, and Mr. Cotton, uh, bulk waste route supervisor, was passing down Shaw Street. I would have been a lot later had he not helped me get in the car, get to roll later in the car. So my first staff appreciation is for Mr. Cotton. Make sure that makes it in his record. I love the way people help you in Columbus. But most importantly, after number one, number two, number four, number five, number seven, number eight, and number nine did what they did on May twenty-seven, we could have had a mess out of the city manager's office. But I just want to appreciate, uh, Ms. Hodge, Ms. Goodwin, and Ms. Alexander, and all of you. You didn't miss a beat. And when I talked to Isaiah last week, he said how proud he is of the great job that you all are doing. And I just wanted to go on record and say, I've worked in places where the employer terminated somebody that was popular, and everybody just stopped working. Do you hear me? They just stopped working. So I know that these, uh, women, uh, that Mr. Hughley, uh, worked with never stopped working. So my staff appreciation is for all of you and your integrity and your professionalism. On the issue of lifting up East Winton, uh, Madam Clerk, if you could pass out the flyers, just the flyers, uh, because the flyers are for an event that was held on June twenty-seventh. That was my birthday, Mr. Huff. Uh, uh, your brother came, his wife came, a bunch of people came. Uh, on June twenty-seventh, we launched the lifting up East Winton campaign to deal with the blight and all of the abandoned houses, uh, and all of the dangers. Remember when the thirty-two-year-old mother of six was shot down, uh, at Ada and Shaw Street in twenty-twenty-four? Well, this is partially in honor of her uh, because we don't need people being shot down in the street in that historic black neighborhood. Uh, the house I live in is eighty years old, built in nineteen forty-five, probably by a soldier returning from the war. Uh, but Ms. Annie Parker, who lived in that house before it was sold, uh, to the guy I rent from, uh, she took really good care of that house. And I'm finding there are quite a few black homeowners in East Winton. Because if you want to deal with affordable housing, you got to own your own home. That's the only way you're going to get affordable housing. And you have got to have more programs as city council members to promote homeownership, particularly in the black sections of this community where homeownership is very low. Now, uh, I do want to say, in terms of the crime prevention grant, uh, we have an application in, which went in on March thirty-first for crime prevention. Uh, I have never heard of any foundation not making a decision on who's getting the grants after, uh, before the grant period start. The grant period started on July one, number ten, and this is something that needs to be looked into about crime prevention. I've been spending quite a bit of money getting ready for the campaign. I don't know whether we're getting the grant or not. But you could go to the website that you see on those flyers, and you can make a donation. And by the way, uh, number ten, number three, I repeated your ass. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you give out one to number three, Mr. Huff, one to number ten, uh, one to the mayor, and keep one for the clerk's office for the record? Uh, that's the, um, booklet, uh, where you can see all the support we receive. And so don't be shy about supporting the campaign. Mr. Huff, Mr. Chambers have ads in.
Time is up.
Oh, well, I will come back because I do want to talk about Sheriff Countryman and his political shenanigans with these investigations of those women, uh, in leadership. I do want to talk about that, so I'll come back.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll come back. Thank you, political shenanigans.
Yes, ma'am.
Number two, political shenanigans.
All right, next, Ms. Ashley Williams. Uh, unanswered questions, unethical use of power. Ashley Williams, unanswered questions, unethical use of power and mismanagement of money.
Hello. Good morning, city officials. My name is Ashley Williams, native of Columbus, Georgia. I sent an email, which I will outline in this speech, to the Muskogee County Sheriff on June 23rd concerning the repulsive 118-page investigation, his department headed up into the city's ethics, mishandling of money, toxic employee behavior and potential cover-ups. Keep in mind, this all dates back to 2023, when auditors found at least $45.1 million worth of taxpayer money missing and unaccounted for. After not receiving an answer from the sheriff, I then forwarded the email to every single one of you, city council and mayor, which all of you opened dozens of times, yet chose to once again stay silent. I would say I'm surprised, but I don't lie. For those of you just tuning in, with the help of late whistleblower Nathan Smith's leaked investigation, the Muskogee County Sheriff's Office conducted and released a report using Columbus taxpayer money and manpower for 17 months. The report outlined several behaviors aligning with felony charges, yet ended in the tune of two misdemeanor charges. The sheriff expressed opposition to Assistant District Attorney Wayne Jernigan's refusal to prosecute most of the recommendations regarding the multiplicity of felonious charges, according to an article published in June and the sheriff's personal comments on social media. Based on the sheriff's expressed opposition, I asked him, and now all of you, three questions. Again, as the chief law enforcement officer over Muskogee County, it's my understanding that the sheriff has authority over the courts and jail and that he has arrest power, even that over the chief of police. Assuming this is true, why are you, sheriff, yielding to ADA Jernigan's refusal to prosecute? And it's my understanding that this, the sheriff, it's the sheriff's duty to bring charges against a person at the presentation of probable cause, which in this case, his investigators are eyewitnesses to the alleged crimes cited in that report. Upon probable cause, a warrant should have been issued. Now, once the arrests were to be taken place, they should have been brought before a judge and the judge was to have the decision to dismiss the charges or bind the case to the superior court. Since the majority of the city employees named in the report were never formally charged, why has the sheriff not issued the warrants or called for these arrests? At this point, one of two things is happening. Either the sheriff's investigators are inept or ADA Jernigan does not know how to prosecute your employees, mayor, and/or does not want to. If the sheriff's investigators didn't provide Jernigan with enough evidence to prosecute 118 pages, 17 months, guys, then it appears that the sheriff's office and his investigators wasted not only taxpayer time and money, but also placed more undue burden on the citizens of Muskogee County, causing even more distrust to unravel between the citizens and your offices, Mayor Barry H. Henderson III. My question was and still stands, are you, mayor or sheriff, willing to submit a complaint to the state Georgia's, state of Georgia's prosecuting attorneys qualifications commission regarding misconduct, negligence and the possible conflict of interest to have Jernigan reviewed? If not, we will. And as we all know, a prosecutor is elected to represent the will of the people in the courts when a crime is committed against the people. And since Jernigan failed to act on the crimes outlined, he has violated his oath of office and I question whether he can be disbarred. You all are the whipping boys of this pony show, refusing to respond to emails with valid legal questions from citizens regarding citizens. Mayor, since you're so big on etiquette, why, when presented with the finance audit for the first time in public session back in 2023, did you ask the city's internal auditor, quote, "What is this, a hit?" I'll answer your question, Skip. Yes, this is a direct hit on the negligence of oversight and dysfunction of the people who work directly and indirectly for you. How many decades have you been involved in Columbus's malfunction? Nearly the same amount as former city manager Isaiah Hughley. We need term limits. We have roughly six months to get these people charged, including former city manager Isaiah Hughley, before you all start re-campaigning, appointing a new city manager and electing a new mayor. Is word on the street true about Hughley attempting to run for mayor and name an all-black city council? We, the people, have had enough of your poor leadership. Wake up, Columbus, or get ready for the ride to get even wilder and darker. I don't have time to read this, but I was going to read Isaiah 122 through 31. Good day, public servants, and wake up, Columbus.
Thank you, Ms. All right, next is Ms. Catherine Bailey regarding corruption.
Um, I'll read as quickly as I can, and if I don't finish it, I don't want my three minutes, you can finish it. Um, good morning, council members. My name's Kathy Tanner. I'm a lifelong resident of Columbus, Georgia. I come before you today as a concerned resident of Columbus, and I'm not alone. Many in our community are growing increasingly alarmed by what seems to be a growing disconnect, a disconnect between the rising levels of crime in our city and the continued and even increased use of taxpayer dollars on crime prevention grants. Sitting in council last August, I watched as all that money was allocated to 42 organizations. I was taken aback. In fact, the late Jay Nathan Smith and I discussed what appeared to me to be a money grab. We both asked the same questions. How do we know these funds are actually making a difference? How can we prove these dollars are helping reduce crime? Nathan raised his concerns several times at council meetings, and now due to his untimely death, I feel it's my responsibility to take up the charge. This isn't just a matter of the budget, it's a matter of safety and public trust. When taxpayer dollars are on the line, we all deserve to know exactly how they're being used, what's being done, who's being held accountable, what results are we seeing, where's their quantitative evidence, anywhere? Much like the investigation into the corruption and criminal activity at CACC, I knew exactly how to follow the OPR, open records request process. I did that, nothing more and nothing less. But this time, the process was irregular and that led to confusion. Misinformation was prematurely shared with grant recipients before any issues were resolved or clarified. Let me be absolutely clear, I did not reach out to grant recipients, nor did I accuse anyone of wrongdoing. The confusion wasn't caused by my request, it was caused by the way my request was handled, and I urge the city to review that. The crime prevention director contacted me after I filed my open records request on June 7th, promising records in alphabetical order. Despite repeated cor- despite repeated correspondence, by June 29th, none had arrived. And on June 1st, July 1st, Mr. Brown said the attorney's office would contact me. July 2nd, I received some records, but they were incomplete and several organizations I requested weren't even listed in the IRS database, making them impossible to locate or verify. But I'm not going to dwell on that part. I'm here because we still don't have the bigger picture. The records I've received so far detail how the funds were spent, but only in broad terms, not itemized. I will conduct another OPR for all 42, requesting their applications from last year. Uh, so I can obtain their addresses, contact information, things that I could not find, could not Google, nothing, and their 501(c)(3) tax exemption codes, none of which should be redacted. They also do not show the direct impact of the spending in the broader context of Columbus' rising crime rates and increasing gang presence in our city. So are these program- programs truly reducing violence? Are they effectively reaching at-risk youth? Are they making Columbus safer? I know that some are. I'm not questioning all of them, just some. We have the right to ask these questions, and more importantly, we deserve honest answers. This isn't about just transparency, it's about ensuring our limited resources are being used for efforts that are actually working and not just looking good on paper. Anybody can write a report. The people of Columbus are tired of watching crime increase while accountability remains vague. We want results, we want safer neighborhoods, and we want to know the city's response to violence is not just well-intentioned, but truly effective. This is not an unreasonable demand. I think it's my civic right. So some data, um, Columbus consistently ranks among the highest violent crime rates in Georgia. 2022 saw a troubling spike in crime, followed by a partial decline in 2023. While there's been improvement, we are still well above the national average. This paints a clear picture to me that we need more focused intervention. Now, let's talk about shootings, a key indicator of the violent crime in our city. I do understand that murder has gone down, but and and I agree with that, but from March of this year to May, there were 476 shootings in Columbus. That's about 159 per month. April had the most with 181, I guess a little spring fever. Hmm. Uh, July 4th weekend, four dead, one injured, CPD investigating eight crime scenes. This past Saturday, two women were killed. If these levels continue, Columbus is on track for over 1,900 shootings annually, which is an alarming statistic. These statistics highlight the urgency of value of evaluating our crime prevention efforts. Yes, we are seeing a stabilizing crime homicide rate, but the frequency of shootings remains high. That's their first line of defense, get a gun and shoot. It's a problem that we cannot ignore. The question remains, is the money being spent on the crime prevention programs truly making a dent in these troubling trends? If not, then where should we focus our efforts?
Your time's up, ma'am.
Okay.
Your time's up.
Last paragraph, you want me to read?
No, your time's up. I appreciate you, though.
Yeah.
Uh, and I and I'm gonna, you can have a seat if you want to. And and I'll tell you, I appreciate you bringing up the the statistics. I I don't like statistics typically when it comes to to crime, especially not violent crime, because each statistic is an individual. But but we do monitor them because it allows us to determine if we're improving or if or if we're not. And and over the last several years, we have improved as much or more than most cities in Georgia, certainly, and probably most in the southeast. Uh, and I do think that the Crime Prevention Board, and it is a board, Seth Brown's the director, he kind of works at the pleasure, not doesn't work at the pleasure of the board, but he he makes sure that he gets their wishes and has them placed, uh, has involved in in the money that is distributed. I know Mr. Brown is here, and I know there's a lot of questions you made, and you you're right, the public deserves to know what that office does. Seth, I'm going to ask you if you don't mind coming up and just kind of give a a brief response to to some of the concerns that uh were made.
Oh, yes, sir. Uh, there's.
Hit the button if you don't mind. There you go.
Is that it, sir?
There you go.
Okay. Um, the reports are more of an accountability thing. Um, as Ms. Tanner said, she's she's exactly right. Anybody could write anything down on their report, and that's why we make visits, that's why I talk to school principals, counselors, um, I've met with other programs, I've talked to parents. You know, you could turn a report into me and it's not going to tell the whole story. I invited Ms. Tanner to come to our office and sit down, um, and discuss these. Uh, when, um, Councilor Anker was running for office years ago, he came and spent two hours with me. We went over all the reports, we went over all the applications, and and that's that's how we treat our office. Um, and the reason I say that is because you're never going to get the true pic- the true picture from just a report. Um, I try to send y'all emails that kind of show where we're at, like the Columbus Tech program, the graduations, those kind of things. And, um, I think those are important, the numbers are important, but to really understand what's being done in the community, you have to go out and see the programs. I tell my board that. Um, you can take that black and white application and pretend that you know what that program's about, but until you see what they're doing or experience it through pictures or videos or whatever the case is, you're not going to understand. That's another reason why we, this year, videoed every application. Uh, we had every applicant come in and video basically how their program operates, um, so that the board would get a better understanding outside of just the application. Um, we operate a little bit different than a federal or state or a foundational program, and the reason we do that is because when this program was, or or this idea was created by people like Frank Myers and Mayor Wetherton and Judy Thomas, it was, um, designed so that not only institutional programs could get funded, but also grassroots-type pro- programs that that weren't accustomed to applying for funding. So there's programs that we deal with right now, like I could use one, Overflow, which is right across the street from us, they had never applied for funding, but they were using money out of their own pocket to to help children throughout Columbus and Muskogee County. And, um, and we met multiple times as they went through this process. If you do that with a state or a federal grant, they're, that's not the way it works. You have to fill out mounds of paper and you have to have, um, basically empirical data from from a an analysis of somebody who you come in and and they basically score your program, which costs thousands of dollars. Somebody like Overflow is never going to be able to afford that. So it takes hands on, boots on the ground to understand what they're doing. Um, the, as far as the application, I mean, the the open records request, we have nothing to do with that. My information was sent to the attorney's office and and unbeknownst to me, they had to redact a lot of information. Uh, we have pictures in those reports that the programs submit, and they have release forms on file, so those pictures can be utilized as I send those reports to y'all. But city attorney's office told us that, um, because they don't have those release statements on, they can't release those reports with pictures. So they had to redact all the pictures out. Then they had to redact all the addresses out, and they had to redact all the phone numbers out. And so those are things that me, as not being an attorney, as somebody said earlier, I didn't know you had to do that. So it's taken a lot longer. When you think about our programs, you're thinking thousands or hundreds of pages of information. We tried to consolidate those into to one big file, like zip files for all of them. Um, but it was still, like several of them got kicked back because it's just so informa- so much information they were trying to email out. Mayor, did you have a specific question? I'm kind of all over.
No, I I think that's fine. I think we just wanted to make make sure that people understand that, you know, this program was put together to try to return some of the one-cent sales tax, the O-Loss. It was focused on public safety, and a lot of the pastors and a lot of the churches from all over Columbus came to us and said, you know, a lot of this is law enforcement, it's all law enforcement, we need something for crime prevention. And you're right, it was, as I recall, it was Mayor Wetherton at the time, former police chief, and counselor, uh, former council Judy Thomas that championed this, put it together and tried to determine how the board should operate. It operates in a very apolitical environment. In other words, council and the mayor, we don't, shouldn't go address these board members and tell them what we want the money spent on. This is supposed to be a reflection of the wishes of the community. They're not going to get it right all the time, but they identify different things that they can put some money towards. And we just actually increased it because some of the, and this money comes straight from the O-Loss, doesn't come out of the general fund. And and that money is used to try to create opportunities. About 80-something percent, it goes towards children and mentoring juveniles.
Yes, sir. And that and that goes, Mayor, from elementary to to high school, um, so there's no real age bracket, but it's Muskogee County School students.
But I I think that the challenge is, is when you're serving that many young people, I mean, you you don't know, you I mean, you can't really put, well, that's one crime stop, that's another crime stop. What you know, though, is who you've interacted with, who you see on a regular basis, who you keep involved. We've got a mayor's summer youth employment program, the idea is to keep them off the streets. We've got 130 kids that we're teaching how to get involved in the work, in the workforce. So anything that we can do in your your organization, uh, that you oversee, I think does a fantastic job. Uh, I have met with some of the board members and they talk about how much they appreciate the opportunity to get involved in trying to help hold the crime rate down. Uh, and we and we have seen, I mean, our our murders, as as Ms. Tanner mentioned, are down by 50%. Uh, but what's important to me is the the aggravated assaults, people that are being accosted by somebody with a weapon, they're down 48%.
Mm-hmm.
And that's partially due to your organization, it's partially due to a more robust police force that is on the streets in the higher visibility. So, uh, we we just want the public to know that because it's it's important that they understand that the things that are being done in this community, top priority of this council, I feel safe saying, is always going to be public safety. And they believe in the projects that that your organization funds. And, uh, I think as long as we keep approaching it from two angles, the law enforcement's important, but the crime prevention piece and what we can do to try to enhance that is, I think, in many ways is more important.
And Mayor, let me, uh, tack on to the bottom, the back of that, is that there are programs that are very, very easy for us to quantify. Columbus Tech is a prime example. The, uh, uh, Flow program that Dr. Flowers, uh, directs and the Second Chance, very easy. Um, if you're, I I wish Dr. Forte was here, who's on our board, he could tell you that the programs like Second Chance and and Flow, those individuals, I said in our meeting, I said, you know, these are people that are, as as the the board was reviewing the applications, I said, these are the people that are on the bubble of being expelled. And Dr. Forte cut me off. He said, no, they're the people that are fixing to be in prison. He said, these are our worst of the worst in our school system that we can no longer handle. And Dr. Flowers program comes in and tackles those. That's where that extra money- That's where that extra money that y'all helped us with, that's where that money goes, to these kids that are truly struggling to stay in school. Columbus Tech, same thing, that's where that bulk of that money went. There was something that Ms. Tanner also said about 501s. The programs that we list when we give them to y'all, the names are not the program, like Better Works Program. Well, it's actually, it's a Georgia Works program, but it's called Better Works in Columbus. So you're not gonna find a 501 for Better Works. It doesn't exist. It's for Georgia Works. And the reason we list them that way is because if I said it's a Georgia Works program, nobody would know what it is because that's not what it's called here in Columbus. So every program that we have has a 501(c)(3), a 990, and a W-9. And I can't fund them, we can't cut a check for them until they have a 501(c) on file and a W-9 on file. Finance will not let us do it. They'll say, I can't cut a check for this, there's no 501 or W-9. And all that information is available. I don't know how, I'd have to talk to the attorney's office and finance about what I can show them, what I can't, because there's tax IDs on those, and there's also, in some cases, social security numbers. So that, I mean, I'd have to get with them, but there is one on file for every organization.
All right, thank you, Counselor Tucker.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Brown, for giving that input. I know we have new counselors, we got Counselor Travis Chambers and John Anker. And I know that, and I say, Mr. Hickey as well. We've had conversations about bringing the original intent of the crime prevention grant and getting a better understanding. I mean, it's good to hear that Counselor Anker, you know, sat down with you for two hours, but bringing it not only to us, but to show, you know, to all the citizens what the original intent was. And then maybe modifying some things, who knows? But having a conversation or work, well, during our work session to see, remember, we talked about adding metrics and things like that. That way, you can quantify the things that's going on with measurable outcomes, because that's one of the questions that you get most when you have citizens, you know, asking questions. You have individuals who do reports, like serious annual reports, and we're not, they're not definitely on the level of United Way, where they will have that type of report, or a goodwill or something like that, but still being able to show the measurable outcomes, just like the Urban League does. You know, they set their goal for the year, and then they work. You see exactly what's transpiring. We do have some amazing programs. I see you have plenty grant recipients that are out there. I see Ms. Bobby Starr, who's out there, and she does really great work in the realm of trafficking, something that we never had in this area, in this region. And it's a needed thing.
Right.
So dealing with those individuals, especially young girls that might have been victimized from human trafficking, very important. We have important programs, and we know that they're gonna be different. Everybody doesn't have the, you know, know-how to do what Ms. Bobby Starr does or what Victory Gardens. You know, there's something different and new over in that brown MLK Shepherd Drive area. But the questions still remain in reference to the measurable outcomes, but that wasn't the original intent. So you gotta get to what the original intent was, what was written, the guidelines that you've been using, and look at that, and then advance it. Because we're no longer the beginning when we first started with the O-Loss. We're in 2025 now.
Right.
You know, and I feel like we haven't evolved from when we first originally started the crime prevention grants. So bringing it back, if we can have it during our work session, and looking at how to make it better. You know what I'm saying? Make it greater than what it actually started off advancing it. And it will definitely help, and you always say that you want to be helped.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and that you're open book. And I definitely want to say, I appreciate, I appreciate citizen engagement. You know, I made a comment about, you hear, I think this was something, I'm thinking it was Marvin Broadway that said this about agitators a while ago, and how the agitators clean the clothes in the washing machine. You're always gonna need agitators. This council body is not an agitator. So when a message goes out that council is trying to investigate through a private citizen, I'm gonna need you to call a counselor and ask them whether or not they said or did not say such a thing. Because it puts a negative viewpoint of council to those grant recipients when we don't feel that way. And I've attended Ms. Bobby Starr's events, I haven't attended yours, Mr. Broadway. I see you're gonna be in District Four on the nineteenth, I'll be back from Philly. But that's not what council is about. Because we care about crime prevention, and we want to make sure that we set you up for success, we give you the resources you need. I would have attended every last graduation at MCP, every last one of them. And I actually bring back information to Warden Walker in regards to programs that I see when I'm traveling all over the U.S. It's not about attacking you or coming after you, because I feel like we're in a moment of rebuilding. You get what I'm saying? So we just want to make sure that we do the right thing for us, creating something that will be able to show measurable outcomes. That way, our citizens can see that we're being productive with their dollars. And that's all it is. And to thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just want to echo what Counselor Tucker just said, measurable outcomes. That's the concerns and calls that I get concerning the crime prevention grants, is that, you know, the citizens want to know how their tax dollars are being spent. And if there's some type of, I think Counselor Travis Chambers said something a while back, and I think even before then I did, about, you know, some type of metrics, you know, something in place so that there's a physical printout of where those funds are going and how they're being spent, you know? Because, you know, when you get phone calls that people are using them for other things, you know, that's concerning. And we want to make sure that we have those measurable outcomes in place. So if you could just, you know, if we can get something in place on that, you know, I think that'll be a big help, that'll shut down a lot of the noise in the community, and it will help people to understand exactly what you're doing. Thank you, Ms. Mayor, you're with that, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Seth, if you would walk through the distribution of the funds and the information that they supply to you, and talk about how the funds are not, the funds are delivered after the fact. They're not given one lump sum at the beginning of the year. Just walk through that with everybody so we have a better understanding.
Each month, the program will turn in a monthly report. And like I said, it's more of an accountability thing because you're not gonna get the full picture from that report. So in, some are, some reports are very detailed, based on the fact of what they're doing. They're actually physically doing things that can, you know, test scores, that kind of thing. If you're dealing with something like Columbus Community Center, they're doing the same thing every day. After-school program, forty kids, make sure they have a place to do homework, those kind of things. So there's not a lot there to, like, theoretically measure. You know, those kids are being taken care of after school. But we still require them to turn in a report so that I know how many kids are there and what's going on. Now, if I don't get a report from that individual, their check is held. That's why we pay monthly. You know, some grants will pay quarterly or annually, or, you know, when the process starts. We don't do that because if you're not holding up your end of the bargain with the monthly reports, you're not gonna get a check from us. Now, I have programs that, you know, they forget, and I have to call them and say, hey, I didn't get a report from you this month, you're not getting a check. And then they'll backpedal, you know, go back and do past reports or whatever the case is. So that's their monthly accountability. Then at the end of the year, they'll do like an annual end-of-year kind of cycle report. And most of those are in May because, well, actually June, you would say, because the end of the school year. A lot of our programs follow the school calendar. Some are done in the summer, we have a few that do that. And then some don't have anything to do with it, like Bobby's program, which is a year-round kind of thing. So that's the level of accountability we've got going as far as, you know, if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I've had people come to me and say, hey, I'm not real sure that what they're supposed to be doing is what they're doing. And I'll contact finance and go, hey, I need to hold off on this payment until I figure out what's going on. And then I'll go out and visit that program specifically, ask questions about the things that I've been offered as concerns. And then also, because there's, a lot of them are school-based, I'll meet with a principal. A lot of our programs occur in the schools at some point in time. They have off-facilities, a lot of them, but they also do things inside the school system. So I'll talk to the principal, and I'll say, hey, is this what's going on? Do you see this happening? Oh, yeah, they are, or no, that's not what's going on. Now luckily, knock on wood, we've never been burned. And I think because we constantly check on them, and I have board members, I had two board members here, but I guess they couldn't wait. Ralph King was here, and our chair, Danny Ann Shirby, was here. They've gone out to programs and looked at them also. So it's a lot of oversight, but it's not just one level. Because like I said, you can't, you turning in a monthly report to me is not gonna tell me exactly what you're doing. It's more to that. And if you turned in a report, like I use Columbus Community Center again, their report's gonna say the same thing every month, because they're doing the same thing every month. The Georgia Works Program or Better Works Program, which is an outstanding program, I think Counselor Kogle has worked with them. Their report, I mean, even Christie has even told me, hey, my report's gonna look the same every time because I'm doing the same thing every night. I said, just send it in, that's fine. Just at the end of the cycle, tell me how many people graduated, how many jobs were picked up by this, you know, that kind of thing. But the monthly reports will be the same every single time.
Well, thank you for that. And I do want everybody to know, there is verification, there are site visits by you and the board, and just for public information. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Chambers?
Yes, thank you. Seth, thank you for the leadership and taking the lead on this program. I would like to see, and we've talked about it, the metrics and for transparency purposes. And I think what I had asked for is if you could come maybe once a quarter to report out, just to kind of allow us to keep our finger on the pulse, and for transparency to the community. But I do have one question. Can you go over the application process and how do you determine what organization will be selected? Or what do we do with the organizations that are in a holding pattern waiting? Can you just kind of explain that process to me?
The application's online, and it opens up, it seems like it's around mid-Fbruary, first of February, depends on, because we've only done it for two years online. And they have until March 31st, 11:59, to fill out that application online. Now, in that process, there's questions and things that they answer, and they also can attach, or they have to attach, documents, 501, 990, W-9, any kind of support material they want us to commit. Those, that online system is available to all of our board members. And they were trying to make it available to counselors, but I don't know if they ever did. You have to have a, like y'all do, you have to have a columbusga.org email to be able to access it, because it's a secure site. Once those are turned in, I look at them to make sure they've got all the necessary information, W-9, 501, the 990, and then also make sure they've filled out all the portions or the parts, you know, what they have and haven't done. From there, after I review it, because by this point, it's probably April, mid-April sometime, the board gets them, and they take batches of them. I have a spreadsheet that I create every year, and in that batch, there'll be, like this year, it's sixty-two applications. So they'll take, like this year, they've been taking twenty at a time to go over. They'll review them, then they come back to a board meeting, and they discuss them. And they figure out, you know, which ones are which, does this one even fit in the crime prevention model? You know, there's programs that we get that are really good programs that just don't quite fit. Not because they're bad programs, but they're not really crime prevention. And so they'll be removed because of that. Then, from there, the board has to decide, okay, these are the ones that we think fit the mold and could be good programs for the city. Now they have to decide, okay, how are you gonna divide up that million dollars? And so then they go through the process of dividing it amongst those individual applications.
So the applicants that do not receive the funds for whatever reason, they don't qualify, things of that nature, do we send out any type of correspondence?
I tell them, you know, unfortunately, the board decided not to fund your application. If you'd like to discuss this further, please come by my office, and we'll sit down. And I try to, I rarely have anybody take me up on it. But when I do, I say, look, here's what the board was looking at. They felt like, you know, you were too heavy in personnel, or this area could use some work, or they were confused by this aspect. Like, right now, we've got a couple of programs that aren't showing any, like, major past performances. So I've already got messages out to them to say, hey, I need more information from you because the board feels like they can't make a decision based on what you've got. Now, if they turn it in, and the board gets it and they review it, then that could change the status of how they feel about the program. But if not, that'll be one of the things I'll discuss with them, hey, you know, we sent you an email, and here's what we discussed. And so I try to tell them, okay, what could make the odds of them being approved in the future, like, higher odds, I guess. Now, I don't make any of those choices, but I do try to educate the participants on what they could do differently that might increase their chances of being approved in the future.
So you don't have any input on the selection process, it's strictly the board?
Yep, I don't. Matter of fact, they approve programs that I would, that me personally, I would not approve. And I've been wrong. I mean, they've come out good. But if I had been a voting member, I would have said, nah, I just, I don't see, I don't see how that program could be beneficial to the community. Sometimes I wish I had a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Kogle?
Thanks, Seth, I'll be very quick. Thank you for being transparent and having, taking the time to kind of break things down for us again, and for some of the new faces that are up here. And I appreciate the transparency and the updates that you give council on a regular basis. And there's a fair amount of really good programs out there that, like you mentioned, had the chance to work with a few. I do think that there is a level of trust that we have between you and council and that we trust you and the board to do, to choose the programs that are the most beneficial. And so I just wanted to say thank you and give you some accolades on keeping that transparency open and hopefully that we can reciprocate with a level of trust going back and forth in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Seth.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you. I know you didn't plan on coming up here, but I appreciate you answering questions.
I love being here, so anytime you want me.
All right, and next on the public agenda, Mr. Tim Mason. And I apologize, Mr. Mason, we kind of got down a rabbit hole there. I wanted to speak about the PAWS Humane Animal Control Services. And sir, I'll try to indicate when you've got one minute left, if you like.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tim Mason, and I've proudly called Columbus home for five years. I love this community, which is why I'm deeply concerned about PAWS Humane Columbus Agency and its responsiveness to citizen concerns. In particular, I am concerned that PAWS Humane adequately enforces animal control ordinances and Georgia's responsibility. In particular, I am concerned that Paws Humane adequately enforces animal control ordinances and Georgia's Responsible Dog Owners Law. And that its staff responds to citizen complaints in a timely and respectful manner. In my recent experiences with this agency, I found both to be in need of improvement. For context, I must share a few details. This matter is related to four dogs kept at a home in my neighborhood. I've identified in my written remarks, the report numbers associated with this. These dogs have long been a nuisance, barking excessively, climbing fences, and exhibiting aggressive behavior that resembles violent dog fights. Many neighbors share this concern. On April seventeenth, three of the dogs escaped and charged at me and my elderly dog, elderly dog during our walk. They appeared to be trying to get at my dog. I screamed loudly to protect us, injuring my voice in the process, while the owners did nothing. And nearby a neighbor witnessed the whole thing. The next day, when I reported the incident to the dog owners, they showed no concern or remorse. But what brings me here today is not the matter of these dogs, but my unfortunate experience with Paws Humane as I pursued a complaint. This agency's personnel treated me as if I were the instigator of the experience I just described. Few of my concerns are addressed in Paws Humane reports, while the concerns of the dog owners appear everywhere in the reports. In fact, it appears that Paws Humane staff have intentionally avoided documenting my actual account in any of their written records. When I shared my story with Paws Humane Director Courtney Pierce, she simply said, Mr. Mason, my job is to help everyone to live in peace, without acknowledging the danger or injury I experienced, and without taking action of any kind. Ms. Pierce's tone was condescending and disrespectful, and her lack of concern was startling, given her position. As a citizen, I was appalled by such callous indifference to a serious matter by someone in a leadership role. Would Ms. Pierce take such matters seriously only after someone is attacked by a dog? Worse, the reports related to this matter, prepared by Paws Humane officers, are riddled with inaccuracies, glaring omissions, and material entirely unrelated to me. Lieutenant John Ray even implied that I provoked the dogs by recording video evidence. Evidence that he suggested that I gather. Further, Lieutenant Ray's communication with me throughout this process was delayed and evasive, and his contribution to the reports is in some ways misleading. I do not believe that Lieutenant Ray was always acting in good faith in this matter. No one should have to live in fear when took, taking a walk in their own neighborhood. However, to my knowledge, this matter has never been fully addressed by Paws Humane, and this agency's written reports do not reflect the whole story. My experience with Ms. Pierce and Mr. Ray reflects poorly on Paws Humane and the city of Columbus. I respectfully encourage this council to review how this agency responds to safety concerns and interacts with citizens, and to hold Paws Humane accountable for meaningful change. Thank you very much.
Mason, thank you, sir. And we, we will reach out to both Courtney and the contract administrator, uh, the internal auditor, uh, make sure they're aware of what went on and try to get some answers.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, next is Mr. Randy Foster, uh, also regarding Paws Humane Animal Control. Mr. Foster?
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning, sir.
Pro-Tim, uh, council, city attorney, uh, city manager. I'm here to speak on the same matter that Tim Mason had done to him. Several weeks after what happened to Mr. Mason, happened to my wife in my yard, while he, she was talking with a neighbor, which was this gentleman. She was carrying on a conversation, these same dogs that Mr. Mason talked about, got out, one of them got out and rushed my wife on my property. And if it, if I had not been sitting in my office and watching my wife really scream and holler, I ran on the, from the back of the house all the way to the front, and Tim and my wife was trying to get this dog, which is one of the three, or four, is back to the, to his original home. The dog was not on a leash, and when the owner found out, not even a courtesy to come to my house and say, I'm sorry. Now, that's my yard, that's not his yard. That's my property. That dog intruding on my property and wanted to do harm to my wife. Now, how do I know that? That dog belongs to that house over there. I've got dogs. You know where they're at? They're inside their fence or they're in my house, and I monitor them, just like Mr. Mason monitored Trooper. He found that dog in a terrible shape when he was a puppy, brought it back to life, and Trooper will defend Tim, just like Tim will defend Trooper. Now, there was a witness to the fact, what happened to Tim. Now, the whole thing of it is, they're saying that this never happened. We have a witness to the fact that it happened. But I'm gonna let you know, the communication problem at Paws and at uh, Animal Control is not very good at all. And the reason I know that, because I tried to raise, on the phone, Courtney Pierce three times, about the same matter that I'm talking to you today about. Not even a courtesy call, not even a, hey, uh, I really don't care about talking with you, or forget it. Then I found a lady, I won't say her name, Donna McGinnis. She works for the city, and she worked part-time, I think, with Paws. Let me tell you, she's one of the nicest human beings from the standpoint of understanding and talking with a citizen of this town. We're all taxpayers. One thing we want to be done is respected. If you don't have respect of the citizens, this thing won't work right. And what I'm saying is, she was the only lady that was willing to take the time to listen to my complaints, and also this gentleman behind me, his complaints. For, if it wasn't for her, none of this would've, we wouldn't be here today, from the standpoint of what we know and what we're doing. She was the driving force to get this thing moving. And she asked me several times, give me time, and I gave her time. I told her point blank on the phone, we'll give you two weeks to find out what's going on. Two weeks, I called her, and I said, Donna, this is Randy Foster, and she said, I knew you was gonna call, cause I've got your name right here. She got my name from the mayor's office. Cause where do we start? No one's gonna call us back. And this gentleman, this mayor, has helped me before in several instances. So they got that phone number and my name, and Donna McGinnis had it. Well, to make a long story short, and I know we're short on time, but I'm, I've, the important thing of it is, is what I'm concerned about is treating the citizen res, with respect. If you're not gonna come investigate it, just say so. And we just throw it in the trash can, and then we'll move on to something else. But as taxpayers, we deserve, if you're taking the city's money, then do what the city pays you for, or don't do it at all. Quit, and buy, and get someone else in that position. But when you tell a citizen, I'm gonna get the sergeant out here to have a conversation with you, guess what? I couldn't find out, there is no sergeant. Wasting my time. I'm not here to complain about the city. The city's great, I love Columbus, I was born here. My wife knows the mayor, they were in the same neighborhood. But the point I'm making is, if you don't react to when a citizen asks for help from you, then what are you getting paid for?
Mr. Foster, I, I apologize.
Yeah, that's fine, Mayor. I thank you so much and appreciate the time, thank you.
Thank you for being here, appreciate it very much. Uh, Councilor Chambers?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. Um, I mean, we've heard from two constituents. How are we gonna, I mean, we, we don't need to let this fall on deaf ear. I mean, what, what's our next steps to make sure that we can, we just, we're in a contract and, you know, trying to go from good to great and?
Yep, and I think we have spoken
Okay.
with Paws and made them aware of this situation and, and also with uh, Ms. McGinnis. And really glad they, you landed with Donna so that she could try to get this moved on a little bit. But this is, you know, this is one of the challenges that exists in animal control. So uh, we will follow up on it and uh, try to get back with Mr. Mason uh, from, from Paws.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilor Crabbe?
It was my understanding that that was a tenant in that house with, with those dogs, and that they were being moved out by the landlord. Do, do we know if they're still there? That Mr. Foster and Mr. Mason have left, but they would be, have been able to tell us if they've left already and the?
I, I don't know. Councilor Tucker?
Yes, um, Councilor Chambers, remember when we um, spoke with uh, our auditor and basically told her to have that three, that quarterly report? These type of incidents will be in that report, and it's, I know that public works when they have issues with, I guess our vendors, they document it and keep it on file. The same thing would go in that file as well.
All right. And uh, last, the most patient man in this room, uh, Mr. Foster, Mr. Gregory Foster, uh, representing the Chatham Woods Neighborhood Association regarding Department of Inspections and Code. Welcome, Mr. Foster.
My name is Gregory Foster, and I reside at five four four six Chatham Woods Court, Columbus, Georgia. I am the president of the Chatham Woods Neighborhood Association. At our recent quarterly meeting, ninety-five percent of the residents voted in favor of coming before this council to complain about the inspections and code department. According to their stated mandate, quote, "The mission of the inspections and code department is to ensure a safe and environmentally sound community to all of the residents and those who visit the city of Columbus," unquote. I am here to tell you that this department falls well short of accomplishing that mission. Here is the case in point. On August third, twenty twenty-four, a Chatham Woods resident complained to me that a large branch measuring thirty feet with a foot and a half diameter fell from a tree in his neighbor's yard and came to rest halfway into his yard. The folders that were passed out contain photos that will assist you in understanding what I have just described. The complainant went on to say that after several weeks, his neighbor made no effort to remove the fallen branch. I facilitated a meeting with the complainant and his neighbor. At the meeting, the neighbor assured the complainant that she would have the branch removed as soon as possible. Later, the neighbor abruptly changed her mind and refused to move the branch. On behalf of the complainant, I contacted the inspections and code department several times, in writing, by phone, and in person. I have also spoken to the director, Mr. Ryan Pruitt, and to date, this department has made no attempt to contact the complainant, the neighbor, or come out to the location to assess the situation for themselves. At my urging, the complainant has not taken matters into his own hands. And the recommendation from the inspections and code department for the complainant to hire an attorney, which could cost them thousands of dollars, is not an acceptable solution. Especially when there are several ordinances currently on the books that could easily resolve this issue. As of today, it has been almost one full calendar year since that branch fell in the complainant's yard. Except now, it is rotten and ripe for insect infestation that could easily spread to the complainant's home. By any reasonable standard, this is an abject failure on the part of the inspections and code department. And based upon the feedback that I received from other subdivisions, this is not an isolated incident. In fact, it is actually a pervasive problem throughout Columbus and Musquega County. As a result, many residents feel as though the inspections and code department places much more emphasis on assisting commercial interests than providing adequate support to residential neighborhoods. While it is easy to gauge the value of a neighborhood based upon factors like their tax base, it is short sighted for government officials to simultaneously ignore the fact that these neighborhoods employ numerous private contractors as their residents strive not only to maintain, but upgrade their properties. Chatham Woods alone puts hundreds of thousands of dollars into the local economy each year. My neighbors and I employ a virtual army of painters, plumbers, electricians, landscapers, as well as window, roofing, and fence companies. The complainant in this case just sent, spent seventy thousand dollars renovating his entire home. Please understand that we're not asking local government to do the heavy lifting regarding this issue, but we do need this council to motivate the inspections and code department to have their code enforcement officers respond when called and enforce applicable ordinances when justified. Doing so would, would provide the appropriate tool for a neighborhood to make sure that one bad resident is not allowed to diminish the quality of life for all the good residents or devalue residential property in Columbus and Musquega County. Look, everyone agrees it is always cause of celebration when this council brings new businesses, builds new facilities, and partner on projects that create jobs in greater Columbus. We can all see that you work very hard to accomplish these things and we are grateful, grateful. But it is a mistake to neglect these neighborhoods, even if you are doing so inadvertently. They are just as vital to our economy as any new business, and these neighborhoods are able to produce the one thing that no business can't. And that is future citizens that will contribute to the successful legacy of Columbus and Musquega County. Thank you.
Mr. Foster, thank you, sir. Councilor Hickey?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mr. Foster, thank you uh, for coming down and, and sharing your concerns. Uh, of course, you know, now, you know, we spoke the other day on, over the phone, and uh, and I did reach out to uh, Mr. Pruitt, uh, and uh, shared with him uh, some of my concerns, and of course, you know, upon reading the uh, ordinance, uh, it deals primarily with uh, overgrowth of grass and, and, and things like that. Uh, but um, I, you know, maybe, and I just, I'm turning to Mr. City Attorney now, uh, maybe the ordinance uh, that we currently have in place, maybe it can be tweaked some kind of way, or some things can be added, or it can be amended, where uh, when we're dealing with tree limbs like this and things, uh, uh, to give code enforcement a little bit more leeway when they go out and, and maybe can, you know, address these issues and then. Uh, and I also understand that, you know, speaking uh, with my colleague, uh, uh, Councilwoman Crabbe, a lot of these time, a lot of time, these things that are happening on private property, it used to boil down to uh, you know, it turned into litigation between both parties, you know, and things. And uh, but I know that's an expense for somebody to have to go through, to hire attorney, to take it to a small claims court, to get these things done, but, yeah, and, and of course, uh, with what insurance would pay and will not pay uh, in these cases. But I just, I, I, I would like to take a look at the ordinance, uh, uh, Mr. City Attorney, and just see uh, what can be done to amend it. Uh, because when I was reading it, it was just like I said, primarily focusing on uh, uh, you know, grass and weeds and, and stuff like that. So uh, and then also, uh, to Mr. Pruitt's credit, uh, and I know the mayor can probably attest to this, uh, you know, I, I know that they're short staffed, uh, they don't have, a lot of times, uh, the people uh, in place to go out and check everything right away. Uh, but I know that he's willing to, to work with this council, to do what needs to be done for the citizens in the community, when I spoke with him, and, and to make sure that, you know, things are um, environmentally safe, uh, and also, you know, that, that people who own these properties are doing what they're supposed to do. Cause not only Mr. Foster, and I shared this with him the other day, I, I've got several other complaints in the district. Uh, you know, people with uh, swimming pools in the backyard that are not being kept. Weeds growing up, uh, one of my constituents said he can't even go outside to enjoy his back porch because of mosquitoes that's coming over from this overgrown uh, area. And uh, and this water, this sitting water just in this pool that hadn't been maintained, you know, you know, for, for such a long time, and just creating a huge mosquito problem in that area. And then, um, not from where, far from where I live at, there's a residence uh, over on Outer Drive that, that is like somebody had moved out, said all of the furniture on the front porch, the weeds are eight feet tall, you know, and, and, you know, we've been trying to get something done with that as well. And, and I know code enforcement can go out and uh, cite people and leave citations, then a lot of times, these property owners, they don't even live in the community anymore. You know, they've moved out, and so, so it's hard to, you know, reach them and, and get, get. And so, it's hard to, you know, reach them and get people to do things. But I share, you know, deeply your concern, you know, I feel what you're saying. I appreciate you coming down, letting us know. And I will, you know, get with the city attorney and see what we could do to amend the ordinance if it can be done and so that we can get out and help encourage people to do the right thing on their properties.
Okay, yeah, you're right. It is unfortunate, especially tenant residing properties. It makes it tough to try to get them to stay on top of it. Counselor Tucker? Thought I got you. There you go.
And I know this is a backyard and it's not, you know, on the city right of way. We had an incident on Steamwell Road where you had a lot of dead trees, but they were, I guess, right away, right next to the right of way. And forestry went out and each, the city forestry's office, but each property that was along that corridor, they, that had, you know, dead trees, they were issued, basically, I guess you would call it, would it be a citation? I'm gonna be looking at it. But they were, they were basically, they would issue a letter and they would be required to cut that tree down. So I know it might have been in the backyard or however it was situated, but if you have anything that's like close to city right of ways, you can send that in. Because I know we have a lot of them over in District Four. But they tend to fall either way in limbs and stuff. So I just want to add that we do have some flexibility, but in the backyards, it's kind of no flexibility.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Deputy City Manager Hodges, you have...
I just wanted to comment that we're happy to work with the city attorney's office and with council to make any amendments to the ordinance. This particular case, I know Director Pruitt had a discussion with the city attorney's office, and this was determined to be a private property issue that code enforcement didn't have any jurisdiction to handle. But we're happy to work with council to make any amendments that allows for enforcement activities to continue.
Yeah, a couple of follow-up points. The pictures that have gone around show a lawyer, a classic case of private nuisance where one private property owner might have a claim, does have a claim, for damage against the other private property owner. So they definitely should talk to their insurance company and/or attorney about that, trespass damage claim. Now, when you get into weeds and swimming pools, the county does regulate both. If they amount to a health hazard, then the health department, Mr. Pruitt, would have some jurisdiction to go in there if there's a health or a safety hazard because of overgrown weeds, possible rodents, you know. Same thing with pools, if they're a danger to neighbors with excessive mosquitoes. But that's the kind of thing that you can regulate as a county. This, the pictures here, of course, demonstrate a private damage claim.
Thank you. Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Foster, can you come on and ask you a question, please?
Yes, sir.
So when you all met, was there any discussion at all about, you know, the owner to, which have suffered, the tree falling onto their property? Have they, was there a discussion about them possibly going to small claims court or getting their insurance company involved to try to help resolve the issue as well?
Well, I told them, let's try to go through the legal process first. And the reason I say that is because at what point does a fallen tree or branch becomes debris? We have debris and garbage ordinances, and that could be applied. It's not just weeds and overgrown grass. We can handle that. But when you have an unscrupulous neighbor that's pretty much trying to use dodges to avoid their responsibility, then it falls upon, I think, the city, first of all, to cite based upon applicable and all applicable ordinances, not just weeds. We're talking about, that's garbage. There is a safety hazard and infestation. It's a property damage hazard too, because like I tell you right now, termites love rotting wood. And that could go to this man's house. And this house, this guy spent tens of thousands of dollars renovating. And it's beautiful, and he wants to do his yard, but he can't do it with half of a fallen tree in his yard. And I'm sorry, but that's, and here's another thing. Why don't you have the code enforcement folks work with neighborhood associations like mine? I got people that, we're ready. Most of us are retired, middle-aged, we're ready. I have neighbors from Sears Woods, the same Coalition that stopped the rezones. We are ready, we're prepared, but we can't direct code enforcement to get their people out there. Come see us. We could be a false multiplier, just like Neighborhood Watch is a false multiplier to local law enforcement. Use us, we're here. I gave my number, you can call and come see me anytime. So the situation that we're dealing with is the ordinance, yeah, they need to be rewritten, but the officers got to get out there and they need to cooperate. There needs to be cooperation with neighborhood associations. That's my point, Councilman.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Ms. Hickey. All right. I think that brings to a close the personal agenda, public agenda. So we'll move to the deputy city manager's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a few items on the agenda this morning. First one being a service agreement with Public Consulting Group LLC. This is brought forward by the fire department.
Motion second to approve item one. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's put it up on the screen and councilors please vote. Deputy City Manager, you can...
Sure, this will help facilitate a managed care reimbursement program. They will pay ten percent of any supplemental Medicaid payments that PCG is able to recoup. There's no upfront fees or cost if no reimbursement is secured.
All right, and that, okay, that is approved. Okay.
Item number two is Georgia Medicaid Fee for Service.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item two. Any discussion? All right, please put it on the screen, let's try to get them posted on there.
And this is a program that we participated in this past fiscal year. There was a net revenue of about two hundred thousand dollars. Again, this is a program with the state of Georgia.
All right, and that's approved.
Item number three is Flint Energy Foundation Grant.
Motion second to approve the grant. Any discussion on that item? All right, put it on the screen, councilors please.
And this is to submit a grant for four hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-five cents to purchase a public safety robot called Spot. There's no matching funds required, and this was initiated by the fire department.
All right, it's approved.
Under purchases, purchase A is fuel purchases. This is our...
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve all the purchases. Is there anyone that anyone would like pulled? Question? All right, hearing none, put it on the screen, councilors vote. Reminder, you vote one time, but it'll be to approve all five of the purchases.
Item A is fuel purchases for the fiscal year 2026. Item B is federal and state mandated fees. This is solid waste fees, state alternative fuel impact fees, Georgia Department of Labor, workers' compensation annual assessment and others for FY '26. Item C, the vehicle build-out services for the sheriff's office. Item D is a contract amendment to NeoGov. This is our application system for additional modules. And item E is amendment to the construction management services for Gilvane. This is to provide services that was approved in the FY '26 budget for sealing of windows, build-out for the IT department, as well as replacing the doors to automatic doors at City Hall, as well as a hundred and eighty-three thousand, a hundred and sixty-three thousand for insurance repairs at City Hall, and that will be paid through insurance.
Okay.
We have three updates, presentations on the agenda today. The first, I'll ask Director Will Johnson to introduce the consultants working on our Safe Streets for All Grant. This was a million dollar grant that we received and we're working through that process. Want to provide council in the public an update on that process.
There it went. Just a little delay, thank you, Will. All righty, good morning. Thank you so much for your time and the opportunity to present this information to you. As well mentioned, we're going to give a, just a quick overview of what the overall federal Safe Streets for All program is, what we'll be doing as part of the Safety Action Plan that we're working on developing for the city of Columbus, and then just a quick overview of kind of what we've been up to the last few months since we kicked this project up in March, and what we will be doing in the coming months as we develop recommendations for the plan. So just a quick overview of what the overall federal Safe Streets for All program is. It's a competitive grant program that was authorized as part of the bipartisan infrastructure law. It was five billion dollars, countrywide, our portion's about a million dollars of that. And the purpose of the grant program is really the elimination of fatalities and severe life-altering injuries on our roadway network through a safe streets approach. And I'll talk a little bit about what that means in a second here. There are really two buckets of funding under this grant program, one of which is for planning, so really developing a roadmap and a data-driven plan of how to reduce those fatalities and serious injuries. And the second is an infrastructure component, giving money to actually implement the strategies and the priority locations that are identified throughout a plan. So this first initial planning effort is really positioning the city to be able to leverage some of those future dollars and fund some of the priority safety needs that we identified through this planning process. I mentioned the safe streets approach, which is something that USDOT promotes and requires as part of this grant process. What the safe system approach is, is really kind of an acknowledgement that there are a lot of different systems at play that contribute to road safety and road safety outcomes. So it's how our roadways are designed, how we set and enforce speed limits, how we as road users behave on the roadways, how vehicles are designed, and also how we respond to crashes once they've happened as well. So all of those elements work together to create a safe system. And it's important when we're thinking about how to eliminate fatalities or injuries that we're considering all of those angles. There's also a few core tenets that this approach really promotes that are going to be key to our plan and our recommendations. And it really represents kind of a paradigm shift away from the way that we've traditionally thought about traffic safety, away from kind of a individual responsibility model to one that acknowledges that humans are vulnerable, humans make mistakes. There are these systemic forces that contribute to some of these outcomes, and a safe system is one that is redundant and tries to build in different outs so that when a crash happens, you know, people may make a mistake, but when they do make a mistake, we try to make it so it's not a fatal or a life-altering injury mistake. So just somewhat kind of the premises is that this program and by extension, this plan, we base it around. There's a few different components that a safety action plan must include, and this is kind of the basis of the scope of our action plan. The first of which is leadership, commitment, and goal setting. So we're required to identify a pretty aggressive goal of reducing or eliminating those fatalities and serious injuries in our roadway network. And then having that goal be supported by leadership buy-in. So at the end of this project, we'll be coming back with a resolution to support that goal to reduce fatalities and serious injuries to help, you know, promote implementation of the plan going forward. Planning structure, we have a project advisory group made up of folks from different city departments, the school board, GDOT, and others that are advising the plan, providing input and feedback through various portions of the planning process. A really robust safety analysis, which we'll share some of the initial findings from, basically crunching several years of that fatal and severe injury crash data to try to answer the who, what, when, where, why of how these crashes are happening. Engagement and collaboration with the community and stakeholders, consideration of equity as part of our overarching safety analysis, and then looking for opportunities to analyze existing policies and processes for opportunities to inject and prioritize safety throughout and using that to inform specific project strategies and project selections, which is the ultimate outcome of this plan, is coming up with some implementable strategies and projects and solutions and doing so in a way that is transparent and reportable to the community so they can see kind of how we're doing as a community and how we're doing when it comes to implementation of the plan. To kind of summarize that up into a few key points of what the outcomes of our action plan will be, we're going to be using data and community feedback to identify, you know, which roads in Columbus are the most dangerous, using that to develop recommendations for safety improvements on those priority roadways. Again, analyzing those policies and programs and looking for opportunities to interject and prioritize safety, and then establishing a process to track implementation of the plan and the study's recommendations in a way that's publicly accessible and transparent. That's kind of the core of the Safety Action Plan. But as part of the grant, there are a number of kind of parallel planning efforts that we're also undertaking, working with engineering to develop and promote a quick build program that will kind of allow them to identify priority safety areas and quickly and inexpensively implement some low-cost, easy-to-implement solutions with things like paint and striping and posts. Developing a safe for us a school program that will do a lot of what we kind of just discussed, but with a focus on safety around schools and promoting walking and biking in a safe manner to schools as well. A sidewalk control program framework that will do a similar exercise, identifying a high volume and high safety concern, bicycle and pedestrian needs, as well as an asset inventory of some key transportation assets along the system and a accessibility audit along some key priority corridors as well. So all of these will be done kind of in tandem with the overarching safety program. This is a high-level look at our project schedule. So we kicked off the project in early March, and for the last three months, we've really been in kind of a discovery phase of the project. So listening to people, hearing what their priorities are, what types of issues they observe on the roadways in Columbus, and doing a really deep dive into the crash data to try to pick out what are the key trends, where are the key areas that we need to focus on. Following this meeting, we're going to be kind of transitioning into the next phase of the process, which is really taking all the feedback that we've got, still keeping the door open to receive more feedback, but starting to dig in and develop those infrastructure and non-infrastructure recommendations to eventually address some of those issues that we've identified in the first leg of the project. So that'll be the next few months, and we'll come back in the fall with kind of a fully baked list of project and program recommendations to achieve that end. And with the, we'll go wrapping the project up at the end of the year. Just wanted to give a quick overview of kind of what we've done so far. As I mentioned, a couple of things we've really been working on are engaging with the community to hear their feedback and then doing a deep dive into the safety crash history around the city. So I'll just share some kind of big picture insights into what we've heard so far to give you kind of an idea of how things are shaping up. Back at the end of May, we had four public events, including a meeting with that project advisory group that I mentioned of stakeholders from around the city, as well as a public meeting to solicit general input from folks from around the community of what their concerns and priorities are. We also had two more focused conversations, one with... We also had two more focused conversations, one with the bike advocacy community, so folks with Bike Columbus and other people around the city that are involved in bike advocacy issues. And also gave a presentation to the mayor's commission for persons with disabilities to get their feedback as well. So among those four, we had about 45 total participants. Some of the key themes we heard was really a desire to focus on implementation, so to ensure that what is coming out of this plan is a, you know, a list of implementable solutions and projects that we can move forward with. Pedestrian bicycle safety came up a lot, as we'll share in a minute with the crash data, that's also reflected as being a big problem citywide, particularly involving folks trying to cross the street, mid-block or away from crosswalks as well. Safe Frost to school, school safety came up a lot, and as I mentioned, we have a kind of a specific offshoot of the plan that is planning to address that. And then, US 27 Veterans Parkway, Victory Drive, kind of that whole stretch, as far as locations, is something that we kind of heard again and again and again as being an issue and a concern, so definitely something that we'll be coordinating with GDOT with throughout this planning process as well. In addition to the in-person engagement that we've held, we've also had a couple of opportunities for folks to participate online, and we're going to be keeping these open throughout the summer. We have a web survey where we've asked folks a number of, you know, ten or so questions about their perceptions of safety and their experiences with safety around Columbus. And we also have an interactive web map where people can look at a map of the city, drop points on a map, and pinpoint specific issues or challenges that they face throughout the road network. So, you can access either of those through these two QR codes, and they're also available on the project website, which is safestreetscolumbus.com. A quick overview of kind of some of the key points that we're finding through that, the survey process, about half of respondents reported that they feel less safe on our roadways than they did five years ago. This coincides with a gradual uptick in the number of fatalities and serious injuries we've been experiencing as well. Of that, respondents said that they felt the less safe walking or biking among the travel modes presented, and that six in 10, so 60% of respondents, reported seeing a vehicle speeding daily. So that's a theme that we'll keep coming to, is speeding and aggressive driving as being kind of key elements that we might want to focus on as we get into plan implementation. We also asked folks kind of what they thought we should prioritize from a traffic safety standpoint, and a few of the most common answers, again, constructing more facilities for bicyclists and pedestrians, reducing impaired, distracted, and inattentive driving, reduce speeding and aggressive driving, so that theme again, and then improving roadway and intersection lighting, being kind of the four key things to hone in on. And then, as I mentioned as well, in addition to the survey, we also have an interactive web map where folks can go and drop a point and let us know their issues. So far, we've had most of the feedback kind of concentrated in the downtown area, mostly focused on bicycle and pedestrian concerns as well, but we're working to kind of push this out to the broader community too, and try to get as much feedback from as many parts of the community as possible. And then lastly, just wanted to present kind of some high level findings from that deep dive of the crash data that we have completed. So we've done a lot of analysis, have a lot of different stats and trends we've identified, but picking out kind of some of the key things that are really going to inform the next part of the process as we start to think of what the solutions might be. These are kind of the five top crash types that came up as we analyzed the data. So, crashes related to speed and speeding were present, and a disproportionate number of the crashes. Again, pedestrian and bicycle representing a third of those fatal and severe injury crashes over the course of the last five years. Run off the road or roadway departure, so crashes where a vehicle leaves the road and typically hits, you know, a tree or a pole or some type of fixed object being another big chunk of the pie. And then, angle crashes, so crashes, intersections, think of your T-bone type crash, both the signals and unsignalized locations or something else that we'll be keying into. And something that kind of cuts across all of those is lighting. So, we see that disproportionate numbers of these crashes are occurring at night, and that's even more so when you look at bicyclists, pedestrians, and other global roadway users as well. So, these are the types of crashes that we'll really be keying in on and trying to reduce and eliminate when we get into the project development portion of the plan as well. In addition to the infrastructure side, we're also focused on looking at behaviors that contribute to these crashes as well. Three of the big ones that popped up were impairment, occupant protection, which is typically seatbelt use, and speeding and aggressive driving as well. So when we think of how we could educate and enforce some of these things, these are the types of behaviors that we'll want to focus on as well. In addition to the overall kind of citywide analysis, we also wanted to do a deep dive to really figure out where these crashes are occurring. Typically, when you do an exercise like this, you find that there's a pretty strong concentration of a number of a handful of roads that are really experiencing a disproportionate number of these crashes. And that's, that's what we found here, that just 4% of Columbus's roadways represent 45, nearly half of those fatal and severe crashes. So, when thinking through how to allocate relatively limited resources, you know, it makes sense that you would want to focus on those, those few concentrated locations where we're seeing a disproportionate amount of these crashes. So, that's what we call our higher energy network, and it's about 4% of the overall street network here in Columbus. We've broken that down by local roadways and state roadways, so roads that the city controls and maintains, and roads that we'll coordinate with GDOT on. These are the top 15 local roadways. As you can see, there's a pretty good distribution around the city, and also wanted to just acknowledge as well that many of these roads, like Buena Vista and Casseta, are roads where we already have, you know, active or program construction that are going to address a lot of these issues, which is a really good first step towards progress of the plan as well. But there's also another handful of issues where, you know, nothing yet is on the radar, and those, those are the areas that we'll really want to key in on and do a deep dive, figure out what the specific issues are, read those individual crash reports, and come up with some actionable solutions. And then, these are the top 10 GDOT roadways. So we have a representative from GDOT as part of our project steering committee, so we'll be doing a similar process on these and closely coordinating and identifying where there might be opportunities for collaboration to address the issues that we find on these. So as you can see, Victory Drive, Veterans, really that whole corridor pops up, as well as a handful of east-west corridors as well. So, in finishing, just some next steps as far as where the project is going. As I mentioned, we've spent the last few months really doing that data analysis and getting that feedback. The rest of the summer, we're kind of going to put our heads down, sharpen our pencils, and turn that feedback and that data analysis into plan recommendations. We'll come back around the fall with that fully baked to present back to the community and back to you all to get some, a last round of feedback. Then we'll spend the back half of the fall finalizing the plan, finalizing the work on some of those parallel planning efforts that we're doing, and then adopting a plan by year's end as well. So, we'll be back to share those results sometime in the fall as well. So, that's all we had prepared. We'll be happy to take any questions.
Counselor Anker.
Thank you for the study. I remember in 2019, after COVID, and then things happened, and we were short many, many officers, and we saw traffic accidents and deaths, and the statistics go up greatly. I wondered if we'd include any studies, or if you did have studies of ratios of officers to population, because I, I'm kind of making this as a comment, and I want to know if you have any data, because I think it's important. You know, we have cameras, we're writing tickets, we're trying to slow people down, but nothing makes your stomach hurt like when you see the blue lights behind you. And then when an officer comes to you, which, you know, I've always been trained, put my hands on the wheel, take the guards down for the officers, they have a hard job, but when they come to your window and talk to you, and they slow you down for whatever reason, it makes a big impact. We have to remember that in our budget when we're planning, when we're trying to get safe streets. So I want to know about the ratio of officers to the, to the population. And I was very happy, number two, to hear you talk about sidewalks and lighting, and I saw some of the hotspots up there, and I know where they are, I drive them all the time, and it makes me nervous driving down the roads. We've got a lot of work to do. Our roads and our neighborhoods demand a lot more of that in all neighborhoods. And then thirdly, and I think I, I touched on the communication of the officers when you're getting a ticket, but I think, you know, the community policing is so important. Our neighborhoods and our people know where the problems are, and somehow we got to have that kind of engagement to really bring it together. That communication makes a big difference. So, can you speak to the ratio of officers to the population?
Yeah, that's a great point, and something that we're really interested to look into. We haven't looked into that per se. As part of this, we've been trying to kind of benchmark where Columbus is compared to comparable communities around Georgia, to kind of give some meaning to the statistics and figure out areas where, you know, some crash types might be higher. And I think this could be a similar exercise where, you know, we look at different communities and see where that is, because that's, that's something that we've heard in our engagement as well as kind of the importance of enforcement, and something we'll be thinking through as we develop kind of those non-infrastructure side recommendations as well as the role of enforcement, aligning enforcement activities with some of the priorities that we're finding with data as part of this process would be a key part of that. So, we can definitely look into that.
A lot of communities similar to us that maybe have some statistics to study. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Huff.
Thank you for the presentation. What would I need to do to sit down with you and have a conversation?
Sure, we can reach out through, through Will and get that set up.
We'll get that scheduled, Counselor.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Counselor Tucker.
I wanted to echo what Counselor Anker said in reference to law enforcement. When we look at it, are we looking at law enforcement when you first started versus where we are now, because the numbers based on 2019 to 2022 were lower than it is now? So would we do an analysis of past and then current, or how would that look?
Yeah, we can, we can coordinate with law enforcement, see if we can, if some of that data is readily available and do that comparison, and see if there might be some kind of causal effects. I'd say that nationwide, there have been, and countywide as well, we have since COVID, just generally seen an increase in, in traffic, fatalities and serious injuries as well. Speeding has increased as other things have changed as well. So there's, there's a lot of things at play, and it's sometimes difficult to kind of pick out kind of causation and correlation with specific things like that too. But, yeah, I think it'd be an interesting exercise and something that we could look at as part of that as well.
Because it's, it's amazing that we're having this conversation, but, and I don't know how this, you get information, past information, but was looking at the level of patrol officers we had on shift at a certain time, and it was like one patrol officer, you know, per beat or less, and nine officers total. And then you're looking at that on top of not having a technology. If we didn't have the sheriff, then we wouldn't have like any, anyone doing like traffic or patrol out there to mitigate those issues that Councilman Anker mentioned, but if we could look at that data, and I, that's why I'm saying it's funny that you're talking, because I was actually looking at that data over the weekend. Don't ask me why I don't. If some, something came up as a memory, you know how these phones do, but it was just showing how that impacts. And maybe because your presentation, I was looking at, researching your presentation, and maybe that's why that came up, but I think it does matter, and you hear that from citizens now that say, you know, as far as the technology, you know, we got school camera, school zone cameras, we got flock cameras, we got so many cameras that's on the traffic, you know, side. So I think that would be good. I do have a question for either our engineer or our planning, and we're, and we're talking about safety. In reference to the signs out there near the construction on Buena Vista Road, is that a GDOT owned sign, or is that our sign? You know, those big signs where it say like arrive alive, and things like that where they're kind of moving them. Does, does it belong to us, or does it belong to GDOT?
Those are the contractor signs, part of the construction projects.
Okay.
And those two projects overlap, so one of them were, but the same inspection outfit is watching over both of those Buena Vista Road projects. Is there one that's not working, or something's wrong?
Well, the one that's close to Macon Road is like arrive, A-R-I-V-E, so it's spelled wrong.
That's separate from the project. They've been, GDOT's been notified about the misspelling.
Yeah, so, so that's that problem. But, on all seriousness, when you're coming, and, and we, we are aware that we're in this construction mode, but still, you have visitors and people, you know, going to Fort Benin now. That Buena Vista Road exit is like so dangerous. I just, I just feel like we need to put a sign, I don't know if it's like midway from Macon Road to Buena Vista, Buena Vista Road exit, because it's going to be an accident. I mean, near misses every day, near misses. I, I be praying to God that the person flying, coming behind me will stop in time, but they almost all way in the trees when they, because they're, they're just not paying attention, so.
We can, we can reach out to the state on that.
Yeah, if we can put it not, not so close to the, to the, to the exit, but back it up some, that way they can know to slow down. So I appreciate you, thank you. And thank you for the construction going on, all the pavement and stuff like that. Appreciate you.
Counselor Anker.
Yeah, and another comment, Mr. Beck, we've spoken before about a neighborhood out White'sville Road. Some, some of our older developments that have been there for 20 years, are we studying some of those roads? I mean, they don't, they don't probably hit the radar from accidents yet, but we've talked about, I can't remember, I've had three or four calls from Moore's Road, I think that was it, where the roads are narrow, there's no shoulders, and has, are we only studying where the accidents are in these?
We could, the crash data could be pulled, I, I don't know if there's any out there. But I thought you, you mentioned White'sville, right? We're, we've got a project on White'sville under development right now.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking of when it comes to safe roads in our neighborhoods, and when we're, when we're considering the fact that we're a consolidated government and our region stretches really wide to the borders, most of the maps in the presentation are more narrow, so I can't tell, are we studying hotspots that are going to need attention in the next five to 10 years? They need attention to today, they're just not going to hit the budget.
We, we're looking at the whole network and the problem.
Okay. Counselor Kogle.
I think I've, I think I've asked for this before, but is there a consolidation of the roads that we're looking, that we're working on as far as like, if, like if counselors can go to either divided by their district, or just a general list of where roads fall into place as far as if they're slotted to be worked on in 2026, 27, 28, so that we can give our constituents some answers? I, like I get, I get calls about the pavements in, in Oakland Park, and I know that that's come up on some of the updates of pavement that we've been working on and repairing. I get calls that on First, First Street in the historic district all the time about whether, you know, when that is going to be repaved. And so, if counselors can come in and go in and see where and cue that these roads sit, or where, like where we are in repairing them or addressing some of these, some of these issues going forward, but if we can, if there's a consolidated list somewhere, or if it can be created, or just to help our communication.
The list is generated yearly on the paving, based on budget, and, but I will continue to provide each district their map and list, and then if there's a particular street, we can look then at the pavement condition index. I've got several, y'all have reached out additional streets, but I just got my bill in this morning, so I'm not sure I'm going to be able to finish the original list. But we, we're, we're developing it yearly based on PCI scores.
Okay. I'm just trying, trying to save some time in between, like our communication, just so that we can reference a, reference a list on our own rather than emailing back and forth all the time.
I'll continue to update everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Tucker.
I apologize. Can you tell us what, what was, what's allocated annually for paving the roads? Was it like one point something?
So it's done each year in the budget, and we have different funding sources that's utilized for resurfacing, paving fund, oh lost infrastructure, we get annual Uh, paving fund, oh, lost infrastructure, we get um, annual allocations from GDOT. Um, and, and there's also an allocation in the sploßed each year. And so it's really year over year, it could um, fluctuate.
But just for the, the resurfacing like sake, because I was saying thank you because North Star Drive, St. Neers Road um, was getting done uh, the last two weeks and that's why I'm saying thank you. But um, in reference to those type roads, those are our local roads, right?
Yes.
What, what's our budget for those?
Again, there's not a specific budget just for resurfacing. It's what's allocated each year from those particular funding sources. And then if there's an improvement project that requires additional funding that's been approved by council, funds are dedicated to a specific project or it's um, provided for resurfacing. So, so the money that's in the sploßed, I will say, was specifically only for resurfacing. And so that's an annual allocation of 1.5 million through the life of the sploßed.
1.5 million that I, I see. And, and the reason why I, when you made that comment saying that you're running out of money, that's kind of alarming. Cause I don't know if we got, and I know you sent the list out to all councillors with which roads we were um, getting paved within our district. So I guess the question would be, are we able to actually fulfill those that we already annotated on that spreadsheet?
I'll look at the total list later in the week and see where we stand. But that's our goal is we try to develop the program and based on uh, the budget.
Yeah. And if, if you could, can you bring it back which ones you didn't um, get to? And if what the total would be to complete those roads. You get what I'm saying?
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilor Chambers?
So for the PCI, um, the pavement construction index is based around scoring, right? So anything that's below 50 and below, I guess that's considered poor or need immediate attention. Is that correct?
When our network was done two years ago, we had a $1.9 billion backlog. Our average score, I think citywide was 46. So we're, but we've been making a dent in it. We're currently doing PCI scores of 25 or less for the whole quarter.
But that was my next question.
We're not going to pave one block and, and go and pave another block. We, we're finding a, a good, nice, long street and making it look good. So.
Okay.
That's, that's the way we're running it right now. And we've made a, I, I think our average is up in the 50s now.
So you said 47 and below?
25 and below.
25 and below immediate attention?
Is what we're shooting to get right now. Unfortunately, I'm running a worst to first program. Hope to get to where we can get into more of a preventive maintenance program and not let them get so bad. But there are so many out there that are so bad, we've got to get them rehabilitated.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Uh, next presentation is an update on the South Lumpkin Road improvements. Uh, we came to council, we had two options, a three lane and a five lane. And we've held a public meeting, so we wanted to come back to council and provide an update on that public meeting and seek direction from council so that we can move forward. This is a TSPLOSS funded project. So I'll let Director uh, Will Johnson and Dr. Star consult it.
Kathy Staller here from Heath Lineback and she'll jump right in it. Go ahead.
Good morning. Good morning, mayoring council members. Um, as Will said, I'm Kathy Staller with Heath and Lineback. I've actually brought Patrick James with me today. He's in our active transportation, so he specializes in sidewalks. So I'm going to let him do the presentation today and then we'll be here for any questions that you have.
Thanks, Kathy. Uh, she mentioned I'm going to be taking over as project manager on this, so just kind of transits me through. Thank you, Will. Um, so today we're talking about the South Lumpkin Road street scape project. Kind of running through an agenda, we're going to do an introduction, project description, run through two different alternates. The first one's preferred, it's three lanes. Then we'll move into alternate one, it'll be a five lane. Look at some cost analysis and comparison between the two. And then I believe last time we presented this project to y'all, the instructions were to go to the public, kind of get some input. So we'll share, we've done that, we'll share that, what's been kind of received. And then we'll, we'll wrap up with a conclusion. So introduction, this project will begin north of the roundabout at the South Lumpkin Road, Infantry Road and ends just at the intersection of Victory Drive, which is State Route 1. The key goals of this project, um, coming off the SS4A presentation is, is good lead in. It's calming traffic while improving pedestrian bicycle accessibility with increasing safety along the corridor. So project description, there's a lot here, go over it pretty quick. Um, we just kind of went over the limits of the project. It's just under two miles, 1.82. It's currently funded by TIA funds and has a budget of 10.1 million. This includes the preliminary engineering, utility right away and construction, so the whole deal. The uh, construction is currently slated for 2027. And then kind of looking at, we'll, we'll show some typical sections in a little bit. But you know, on, on the right side, there's going to be a five foot sidewalk and then a 10 foot shared use path on the left side. And then we're proposing three rapid flashing beacons along the project limits where there's currently no signals um, for pedestrian crossings. And then a portion of the roadway, the southern piece will have a, a raised 12 foot median to help with some of the traffic calming and create some separation for the pedestrians. And then the uh, just a note, that raised median area is adjacent to the existing schools in the corridor. So kind of looking at the traffic volumes, um, we, we projected them out. You know, current year was 2024 when they're done. You're sitting at 11,450 base year 2028, 20 year, uh, four years in the future was 11,550. And then 2048, our projections for design year is 12,050. So what you're seeing here is not a whole lot of increase in the corridor, um, which plays into when we look at the level of service for the road here in a second. Um, and then just so obviously, I'm sure most of y'all have driven down this corridor. It's littered with all kinds of utilities, all kinds of poles. Um, there's a lot of stuff underground, bug ground. But this is the, the list of everything that's kind of sitting out there. So looking at the preferred alternate, you know, I think one of the most important things to hit on this list is the last one that, that the traffic level of service A stays level service A for both the existing and proposed conditions. So you're not really losing anything with it. But what this alternate is doing, currently that road has four lanes with a, a middle lane. It's land dieting that, putting a 12 foot median, some flush, some raised. Putting a shared use path on the left side so that gets your bikes out of the road. That's legally allows bikes to be essentially on the wide sidewalk. And it minimizes all those utility impacts. Um, and, and we'll kind of get in some costing of that. And then we added in uh, bus pullouts along there so that even though you only have, you're going from two lanes in one direction to one, a bus stopping to pick up folks isn't going to hold up traffic. And then some caveats to that, you know, that when you pull in your curb and gutter, reconstruct your curb and gutter, you're going to have to rebuild some of your drainage. But you know, as we get through it and kind of dig into it, we'll, we'll, we always try to work with the existing systems and tie to them. So kind of limit those impacts. You know, there's, there's 14 parcels impacted along this for right away acquisition. Four of those are just driveway easement, so, so fairly limited. So here's just a, a quick typical section. You got your shared use path on the left side, sidewalk on the right. And you see two lanes in each direction and then the, the median in the middle. So this is just kind of like a, uh, did it skip one? It's sorry, it's on delay a little bit. Um, so this is just kind of like a brief overview of kind of the concept layout is what we shared with the public. Uh, this isn't the whole corridor, right? It's a long corridor, so we can only show the small snippet. Um, so we tried to get a few things in here to show the typical section on the roadway. So what you're seeing here, you know, the TO lines are the existing right away. So we're starting, trying to stay in that right away, but still fit the pedestrian accommodations on the left side. You can see that shared use path in gray near the top. And then the, the pink line, magenta lines are reconstructing the driveways. Um, and then you can kind of see how we're getting easements in some areas where we'll have to kind of go out and reconstruct some parking lots and stuff like that. Um, and then obviously on the far right side of the screen, you see like a bus block area. That's an area where kind of the right away will have to bump out. We'll have to have a little bit more acquisition for something like that. Um, this is just showing the utility impacts along the corridor. So the, the red dots are essentially power poles. So you can tell when you got the three lanes and you're pinching in, you can just stay away from a lot of those poles. You're not in them. A lot of the driveways can be avoiding those poles. The sidewalk can kind of wiggle and, and move. Uh, just get, kind of creates the space for us to avoid a lot of impacts. So looking at the cost estimate for this, um, this gets you through everything to construction. Y'all, I want to make sure that it's known that this is a concept level cost estimate, so pretty high level. So there is contingency in there. There's 20% contingency, but we're still, you know, right at $11 million pretty much. And you know, as the project goes, we would aim for that to hopefully come down a little bit. So now looking at alternative one, so this is a five lane approach. Proposes two lanes in each way, more like existing with a 16 foot median in the middle. We still get that shared use path on the left. And you know, coming from the, I believe it was 14 parcels on the first one, now we're getting into 90 parcels. So you're seeing a lot more, it, you get a lot more legal fees, you get a lot more time that goes into all that acquisition. Um, and then obviously you saw how we were just narrowly missing a lot of those poles. Now we're in those poles with this one. And then uh, you know, one thing that a, a pro for this one is the drainage will not be impacted. We're just kind of keeping the road similar how it is, so we don't have to get into a lot of that drainage. But you know, like, like the preferred, the level service A stays the same. Um, this is kind of looking at it very similar to the other one, but you see the two lanes in each direction. You got the path on the left side, sidewalk on the right and some bike accommodations on the road. Um, so this is looking at just similar deal as the three, the, the layout for the five. Um, you can see how much more right away, the red lines on the outside. We just have to get in and touch everything just to fit all of our infrastructure in right away. Um, and then this one keeps bus stops on the road with the idea being that, you know, they'll have the extra lane to go around the bus if it's stopped. Um, now this one speaks volumes. You see all the, the red dots, obviously utility impact same as before. Or a power pole, excuse me. But we're just in all the poles along this corridor. Um, a lot of them fall pretty much right in the middle where our sidewalk needs to be. So it's, it's just going to be a lot more cost there, a lot more time to, to work with those utility companies, get those poles moved. Um, this one does show a rapid flashing beacon in the middle with those blue dots going across. That'd be one of the mid block crossings. Um, so looking at the cost estimate here, you know, same, same grouping, same contingency. You're looking at 15.9 million. So, so roughly a almost $6 million increase going to the five lane. And keeping in mind that the level of service A with the three and the five is staying level service A. So we, we took those two costs, put them on a, you know, easy, supposedly easy to read bar graph. Um, the blue being the five lane, the three being, or the, excuse me, yellow being three lane. You can see in most categories, the three lane's cheaper. Obviously, we talked about some of the drainage can be changed on the three lanes. You have a little, you carry a little bit more cost there. And then the roadway, like pure paving cost, costs a little more on the three lane because you're having to mill and remove some of that extra pavement that's sitting out in the corridor right now. Um, this is just kind of a chart, same pluses and minuses there. So we held the PIAH, um, after we spoke last time, it was held on March 27th, 2025. We had 19 folks come out and sit in that. Uh, we pushed everyone to leave a comment, but of course, some people don't want to or don't have anything to say. So we got eight comments collected in that. Um, the majority of folks that left comments, five out of eight preferred the three lane alternate. Um, one thing that came out of that was, you know, they're upset about the potential business impacts. There's a lot of businesses along that corridor. Um, so when you go to the five lanes, you're pushing in the parking lots and the right away. So they're just worried about, you know, the, the more impactful construction and, and the revenue that will change because of that potentially change. The frequently asked questions from the public meeting, you know, will my businesses be affected? The project aims to minimize impacts during construction. You know, that road's not going to be permanently closed or anything. And, and the goal is to not impact the adjacent parking lots as much as possible. Um, how will traffic not back up with only three lanes? That's that same as third or fourth slide. When you look at the traffic volumes, they're not changing. And then the level of service or the, the traffic volumes are mirely going up over the next 20 years. And then that level of service stays about the same or does stay the same between the alternates. Um, and then the buses blocking flow traffic in the, the preferred alternate, we put those bus pull offs to help mitigate that. And then school traffic for South Columbus back into the road. So we're going to add an additional lane for the school pickup in the design. And we're going to coordinate that out with the city officials and school board. So those are kind of just the general comments we, or questions we got during the meeting.
Uh, Councilor Kogle?
Hi, um, thank you for your presentation. Uh, I have some questions and comments, concerns from uh, some of my constituents as well as just my own personal ones. Um, the, uh, on the traffic study numbers, was that taking into consideration opening up that corridor between South Lumpkin and Benning Road if, you know, at the roundabout?
Yeah, it was. It did.
And any potential development and like um, retail or, or any bit, like additional business?
Yeah, it should have.
Okay. Um, what is the uh, what is the right of way? So if, if we go from the five lane to the three lane, what is the right of way plan of um, of like maintenance as far as, as, and I guess this is a, not your lane, but um, like as far as keeping it mowed and, and clean. Uh, that's something that we always struggle with specifically on South Lumpkin is maintaining the, the right of way and making sure that um, it is mowed. And if we're going to be pushing towards a pedestrian and bike friendly community, um, to make sure that that is, like will that, will that have a higher cut schedule than what it is already? Is that something that we're planning ahead for as far as going, if we were to go the three over the five lane?
So what we'll try to do when they're designing the roadway is to make it as maintenance free as possible. Um, but sometimes that's dictated by the citizens in that area. They want more trees, they want more grass. A lot of times we try to put in the stamped concrete as opposed to a, a grass strip, which is obviously maintenance free. Um, but try to make sure that we have at least trees and, and green space that makes the corridor look more inviting than just a bunch of concrete.
Right. So is there, if, if we go that route, because that's, I, I think that's what was communicated initially was that uh, if we went with a three lane over a five lane, that there would be green space and, and trees and it would dress up the South, uh, South Lumpkin uh, quite a bit. But is there a maintenance plan then going forward to address that, to make sure that it's up to par with, with all of our other, um, with all of our other cities strips that have that type of uh, use, I guess?
So that would have to be coordinated with Public Works um, for their maintenance schedule. Um, and they, you know, they handle the right away throughout the city on a schedule. Uh, and this would be on that same schedule.
Okay. Where, and, uh, as far as the multi-use path, i- is that on? If we look at it, it's on the, isn't it, is it on the business side or is it on the eddy side?
Yeah, it's on the opposite from the school. Yeah.
So where, so where does it go? Does it, where does it connect? Like, is it just a strip of multi-use? Does it connect with the rest of our dragonfly trails?
That's the intent, yes ma'am. It's because you, we're building the infantry drive that's under construction right now. So it'll connect to that right there at the roundabout. You'll have a crossover at the roundabout on the south end and then you'll be able to continue on to the north to get up to Victory Drive.
If you continue on to the north and you continue towards Victory Drive, where does it connect from there?
That would be a future.
Does it? Isn't the dragonfly on the other side of the street? I'm just like from, from, from a, a heavy user of the Riverwalk and Dragon Trail system. And if I'm asking my kids to walk to school and, and there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of communication with me and, and concerns with, um, with students walking on the sidewalk to school. Would it not make sense to have that multi-use path on the opposite side of the street towards? Or are we interfering with the pickup bus lane?
So that was the original concept. That's what exactly what we wanted to do because of the school. But as we dug into the design and we got our survey data in, we found out that the road is not symmetrical. The way that it sits in the existing right of way. So we have less room on the side with the schools than we do on the other side. So we made the decision, you know, coordinating with Will and Vance, um, to put it on the opposite side where we have more room. Because if we put it on the right side, it would have been constant right of way all the way down, which of course adds significant costs. You know, as we've explained in the presentation. Um, so we felt like it'd be a better fit on the opposite side, but then we're going to provide, um, those rapid flashing beacons that will provide additional, um, crossing opportunities.
Okay.
Safely.
Okay.
And also, Councilor Kogle, to answer your question about where will the trail lead? It will go to Victory Drive, but we also have a study that we're, um, getting ready to kick off. It's going to look at all of our trail and sidewalk network and see where those missing pieces are to help us plan for additional connections so that they don't just dead end somewhere. But that, that's a study that we'll be working on.
And it, there will also be a 10 foot trail down Military Drive, which is perpendicular to Infantry Road, which will connect to, um, the Infantry Museum and the Riverwalk.
Right. Yeah. I was just, I mean, I was just thinking about it. Uh, I often, uh, when the Riverwalk is flooded, I often ride my bike maybe semi precariously down Victory Drive and, um, South Lumpkin Road. And just to, I'm just trying to picture myself being on the opposite side of the, like, particularly coming back from Fort Benning, um, being on that side and having to cross the intersection at, um, South Lumpkin Road there to get onto the other side of Victory Drive. It just, from a, from a usage standpoint, um, it, from a specifically cycling standpoint, um, to make, that's just an awkward, uh, that's an awkward transition at that intersection, especially if our other trail is on the other side of the road. So I was just, um, being a little bit proactive in, in that respect of just as a, and giving my perspective as a fairly significant trail user out, um, on South Lumpkin Drive as well. So, um, my other question, you know, we talk about, uh, we've talked a lot about, um, some of the business impact that has been going on, uh, in, I think it's in Councilor, uh, this, over the spider web. And, um, how, what is the timeframe as far as for this project? Because there is, there are a tremendous amount of businesses that are on that South Lumpkin Boulevard. And if we're going to shut down any of those lanes of traffic and have like, there's not, there's no other way to get into those businesses, um, from the backside. They, they only have one entrance and exit off of South Lumpkin Road. So is there a timeframe or what, like what happens when we're?
Yeah. So we're geared for, we're scheduled for construction in 2027. And one of the stipulations in the special provisions for the projects is they have to maintain access to all other properties. Now it may be gravel, it may not be paved, but they will always have access, you know? Even if there's like a lane closure, the workers will have to let people in and out. That's part of the project definition, basically, when it's let to construction for a contractor.
Gotcha. Okay.
So it will not be the same as the spider web where we actually close down that intersection.
Um, uh, that's, that's great because that would be very bad. Um, and then my last question, and, uh, I brought this up before. Has, have we communicated at all with Fort Benning as far as what, if they are going to ever open that ACP spot ever again?
Yeah, I, I did it. I'm sorry. I can't remember the person that I talked to, but I know I did speak with them and I got an email that stated they have no intent of opening that anytime soon. So I, I would think, you know, if they do have plans, we've now reached out and made that connection. So we could coordinate, you know, moving forward in the future.
Okay, great. And that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilor Anker? Hang on. There you go.
Yeah, um, yeah, there's a lot of vacant properties in the South Columbus, or not, not vacant, available properties for new development. And as we study this and we're studying, um, our annual average daily traffic, the, the percentages of increase. I don't know where those numbers come from. You're the professional. Thanks for bringing that up. But looking out 20 years and only growing about, uh, 20, you know, point 2% a year in growth, is that, is that average across community? What, what does that number stand for? It surprises me because to me, I feel like South Columbus is a very developable. We have a lot of opportunities for development, both in affordable housing and business growth with some land there that we might have that's not available in, in other areas. And so where does that growth number come from? And I'm looking at it from the aspect of, you know, why did they choose? Why did the citizens say, "We only want three lanes and not the five lane"? I'm trying to understand where, where the mindset is, is coming from with the citizens. And, um, so did we look at the vacant lots and the business growth along with, uh, where we can build more affordable housing to, to, to put more of our people when we have more jobs and we're going to grow the economy, that's our goal. And then, um, why not five lanes?
That's a lot of questions, so I'll just tackle them one by one as what I can and I'll hand it off if I can. Um, so we'll start with traffic that we basically start by looking at the GDOT. There's GDOT data out there. They have different count stations. It's not always on local roads, of course. So that's kind of where we start. And then we actually go out and do counts. Um, so we actually put counters on the road and those are brought back to us. And then unfortunately our traffic guy is not with us, but, um, they basically do look at their projections based upon the different uses along the corridors and they project it out over to the, um, the open year, which is 2028. And then the design year, which was 2048. Um, so they, they do all the math, um, with all those projections and then that's how they come up with, um, their, their volumes.
So GDOT does projections based on current use of?
In historical.
Okay, in historical. Okay. Well, I, it, it's, it's kind of a comment just to say, you know, we have a lot going on at Fort Benning. We have an industrial park designated back off Cassidy Road, putting in the interchange. Uh, we've got a lot of work happening there and I expect in the next 20 years, a lot of growth. And so what about the, uh, the five lanes? Why did the citizens say three versus five?
Honestly, the biggest thing we heard is, "Don't impact my business. You're, you're going to shut me down. I'm going to lose money." Right? Because if we're all over the property as we showed in the exhibit, um, that's going to impact their revenue. Even if, even if it's open, like we discussed, in their minds, they think, well, you're impacting me. I'm losing money. People don't want to deal with the traffic. They don't want to deal with the congestion. They don't want to deal with the construction, right? That's just kind of the mindset that we kept hearing over and over and over.
So it's a lot of business owners you're hearing from. Did many residents come out of the, I think you said you had 19 attendees?
I can't remember how many were business owners and how many were just residents. It was a good mix. But from the business owners, that's what we kept hearing.
Well, I, I appreciate that and, uh, the city manager.
Most of them that I spoke to at the meeting, it was all about traffic calming, slowing everybody down. That's the complaint we get citywide. And that in fact, that it was still going to maintain a level of service A, which is the best you got. I mean, a lot of our roads are Cs, uh, and that type thing. So it was traffic calming and an opportunity to do some beautification down there. It's a, it's a concrete. There's, there's, you know, that was what we, the feedback I got was traffic calming.
I appreciate this. I, to me, I have a good vision for what our, our Columbus will look like as a whole. And that is a great area of opportunity to make, uh, continue to make Columbus beautiful. And better and more effective. And businesses are naturally nervous. We've been hearing about that. We've got a lot of projects going on. Thank you. I think that's it. Thank y'all.
So what we are needing direction on is we are ready to move forward with the next step. Um, and we need, uh, confirmation from city council that we can move forward with the preferred option of three lanes. Or, which is very close to the budget that we have with TSPLOS or to move forward with, uh, the five lane, uh, alternative.
You need a motion? Is that what you're asking for, to move forward?
Yes, we need direction so that our consultants can move forward with the design work on.
All right. There is a motion second to go forward with three lanes. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed? Let's prove.
Thank you. So we'll move forward with that option and continue to keep council updated on this project. And the third, uh, presentation is on the Cooper Creek Flood Study. Uh, we want to provide city council an update on the work that has gone into the flood study at Cooper Creek. Um, some of this is technical, so we'll try to keep it, um, as high level as we can so that you can understand what we, um, have gone through to look at Cooper Creek and what the impacts are going to be. And I'll have Director Beck introduce, um, the consultants that looked at this particular flood study.
Good morning, everyone. I've got Jeff Keefe here with Moon Meeks and Associates. Bonita had car trouble and did not make it with Waggoner that was their, uh, subcontractor that did the bulk of the FEMA stuff. So Jeff and I will, uh, go through it. I'm going to turn it over to him. He knows a little bit more of the history of it. And, uh, I'd like to welcome him to the podium.
Thank you, Vance. Uh, good afternoon, everybody. Um, trying to give you a history on what's going on here and how we got to where we're at today. Uh, I had a client come to me back in 20, 2023 is in February. He owns a piece of property at the corner of Miller Road and Miller Court. And that's the property that's at the bottom of the screen and you can see, uh, it's pretty well impacted with flood zone. So I met with him. We looked at the property and apparently the property had been filled in development. And I'm guessing that was probably back in the mid eighties, Mr. Woodruff did that development. So the bottom line, the maps are wrong in there. His, his property is not in the flood zone by elevation. Uh, we went out, got the elevations, uh, put a package together, submitted it to FEMA on his behalf, uh, trying to have it removed from the flood zone. We weren't successful with that. FEMA didn't want to accept it, um, knowing that the maps were wrong. So they needed more information. That was a little out of our wheelhouse as far as our company and services we provided. So we contacted Michael Bywaltz, uh, who stepped in and worked with us and the client to further study the creek to find the solution for the flood limits, get FEMA satisfied. And we went through that process through them. That was, uh, Raimi Kemp is the company we were working with, contracted with. And that was just through the client. We went through that process, gathered more information upstream. Michael worked on that for a couple of months, trying to get to a resolution on that. The maps were so bad, he could not get to a area that would satisfy FEMA for the flood study. So when we found that out, we called a timeout, backed up. Michael said, "We need to get with the city. Uh, we need to do a little more study on this." And I need to get my sister company involved, which is Waggoner, who we ended up hiring onboard so we can study this creek a little more and find out what reach we need to go down to fix these maps. So with that, um, we talked to the city, talked to Donna at the time and, uh, came to the conclusion that this creek needs to be restudied. Not for the fact that just our property, which had erroneous maps there, but just upstream. We knew that the maps were dated and, uh, little, needed a little more information and a little more study done. So with that, we had two options. Uh, we had one option that went from Smith Lake, which is at the top of the, top of the screen there. That's, uh, at one of Will White's apartment projects on Blackman Road. That stretch ran from just below Miller Road up to that lake. Uh, that was one stretch that we looked at. And then the other stretch started at the lake, went all the way to Bull Creek. That was a pretty good, pretty good undertaking on that. That, uh, ended up being, uh, the one, the, the latter one going down to Bull Creek was 6.3 miles of creek that we were looking at. The first option, uh, the short segment was 1.8 miles. That's from Smith Lake down to just below Miller Road. That's the option we decided to go with just for cost factor. We, we talked to the city, gave them some numbers, um, coordinated with them and got the go ahead to do it. We engaged Waggoner to help us out. We've, at this point, we have got all the field data captured. All of that's been sent to Waggoner. Right now Waggoner is in the process of going through the flood study, looking at where these limits are going to change, who's impacted, who's not impacted. So that's kind of where we're at today with where we're at. So I'm going to have to go through these floods as well as y'all. Um, our, uh, Waggoner representative did not make it, as Vance said. So what they're looking at now is flood plain comparison. That's the old flood zone compared to what the new flood zone is going to look like. We're looking at the properties that are affected and we're looking at the base flood elevation changes. Uh, that's the flood elevation. And as I said before, the FEMA.
Could you talk to the microphone?
Yeah.
You can see it right there. You don't have to look up. Just look down, see it talking to Mike.
Got you. All right, perfect. Um, as I said before, the, uh, the data is pretty dated. Um, the last analysis on this stretch was in 1979, according to the, the slide they've prepared here. So we know that we're working with some older data. And with the development, uh, naturally it does need to be restudied. All right. This shows the scope of the revision. This is the, uh, the reach that we're addressing right now, what's highlighted in red. Like I said, 1.8 miles of stream and the restudy affects three firm panels, which are the flood insurance rate maps that we talk about. And the letter of map revision, which is what Waggoner is preparing right now, is the letter of map revision that, uh, is submitted to FEMA. And that's the request to have the maps revised and changed. This is just letting you know the data that was collected. Uh, Moon Meeks gathered all the field data, the cross sectional data that Waggoner needed. Uh, actually on the ground, gathering elevations, uh, from the lake to right below Miller Road. And they also take LiDAR data, which is available. Uh, the city has LiDAR data and I believe it's a two foot LiDAR data that they use in conjunction with our field data. And that's what they're using to generate their, their models that they're preparing for the flood limits.
These are just some tables showing you potential bloody ten percent chance, one percent chance type thing in that area. And just more analysis of going up and down the, the stream of certain rain events projected over top and at a couple of, uh, drainage structures that were put under various streets. This is the big one right now. There's eighty-three properties within that flood zone. And if we do the map revision, it'd be nineteen. There's ten in the floodway and we go to nine in the floodway.
I'm looking at pillar port because that's something that I've been working on.
Yes. That's down at the bottom. So that area you were talking about would come out of the flood zone, right?
Out of the flood zone, correct.
So I think, um, just to interject, so we cannot issue a permit to any property that's in the floodway. And so the property, I think that Counselor Crabber is referring to was in the floodway and could not, we could not issue a building permit based on the, the maps that were adopted at this time. So that's when they went through kind of this process to evaluate, um, whether not just this individual property, but that whole section of one point eight miles. How did that impact that whole section? And so although it does pull that particular property out, it does put properties in. So that is the information that we want to make sure council understands. When this is submitted to FEMA, it will benefit this one property owner, which again, should not be in based on the information that they've been able to, um, provide. But it will put properties into that floodway. So I think.
Williamsburg Drive, Cornock Road, is that in that red area? That's going to be in the flood plain?
So I think there is a, the slide specific to the properties that will be.
The little red boxes are the ones that are added to the flood plain in, in the blue. The color of the others just, uh, basically taking eighty-three out, putting nineteen in. So there's nineteen current property owners that do not, are not required to have flood insurance. But pending how their loans are and all, they will have to now go get flood insurance.
Will you be giving us that, the information so that we can contact our constituents and let them know?
Well, we wanted to bring it to you, the whole presentation. And it's not going to be an overnight process. The loaner is what, several months?
Yeah, it's about four and a half months.
So we really just wanted buy-in. Did y'all want us to go down the full blown, asking for the map revision? So, but you want to run, we'll run through the others.
Just keep going through those. I just wanted to interject a little context to that.
Yeah, these are the three properties we were looking at on the other map that are going to be brought into the flood zone. There's already some properties already in the flood zone. Same thing, just another view. Yeah, these are, these are three more that would be affected.
One more. Of these properties on the effective floodway, so these properties in the black lines, they're going to be in the flood zone after these maps change?
It looks like that, based on what I'm looking at here, those are going to come out. Cause they're, they're shown in the floodway on the existing map.
The red stripes is the current.
That's the current floodway. Mm-hmm. That's, that's what's on, on the maps currently. That is going to shift to the left side as you look at it. Where's, where Cooper Creek wording is, all of that's going to move over to where that, it's going to fit the creek.
Jeff, I've got a question here from Ca- Travis Chambers, Counselor Chambers.
Yeah, just quick question and just make it real simple.
Okay.
How many people will be impacted that are currently not in a flood zone? If we can move forward with this, how many people will?
I think it was nineteen.
Let's go back.
But there's currently eighty-three that are in it. So the bulk of them would come out.
Are you saying that they will all but nineteen?
Hit your lights.
No, there's, the nineteen currently do not, they're out of.
Go to slide nine. There's, it shows the bar graph.
Counselor Crabbe.
All right, thank you. Go back, thank you.
I just, I'm going to have a lot of questions.
To this.
We didn't want to miss a one.
I'm not, I'm not doing that.
Go to the, the ones at the upper circle.
That's it.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, this one. It shows. So there's eighty-three properties. Go to the next slide. That one. So you can see the eighty-three properties.
I'm not touching.
Right there. The sixty-seven and the sixteen that are currently in the flood. Sixty-seven of those will come out. Sixteen will remain in, that's already in. And there will be three additional properties.
So it's just affecting three properties that.
That's correct, but it will pull sixty-seven out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Counselor Crabbe. You done?
For now.
For now, okay.
And we apologize, the consultant that has the technical thing of this flood study was unable to be here, so.
I'm afraid the battery has gone out on this or something.
No. Yes. We need to provide the, the three that will be impacted with this information before anything is submitted to FEMA to get the maps updated. And so we wanted to provide that information to city council that by changing the FEMA maps, there is winners and there are ones that are impacted directly. So we will provide those three addresses to Counselor Crabbe. And we can prepare a letter to make contact with those three homeowners. But we cannot issue any building permits until the flood, until the maps are updated. So the one individual that would be coming out, our ordinance requires us to not issue based on the FEMA maps that are currently adopted.
All right, Counselor Tucker.
Bless you, whoever that was. So this actually transpired because of one property? Is that how?
That's how it originated. It was one property owner that, um, contracted directly with Moon Meeks. And after they initially studied, they met again, at that time with Donna Newman and discussion was had about we, the last map was updated in nineteen seventy-nine. A map revision is probably something that needs to be done. And so that's when it became a city, um, effort to look at that particular section of the, of the map.
Thank you.
So there's the timeline where we are, where we are now, if we want to pursue the, uh, map revision.
But basically the map has been corrected.
It has not been formally submitted.
Based on, sir?
It's not been formally submitted.
Right, but it's, but the, the changes have been made. And I guess my point, my question, and I'm cutting in line, I apologize. But my question would be if, um, what happens if you didn't catch that and they flooded? They can't, I mean, they don't have flood insurance and they found out that they should have been in that area. That's what, that's what concerns.
Now that we know, I think we do need to move forward with the submission.
Yeah, protects everybody involved, actually.
Absolutely.
It costs them a little money. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you, I was going to bring that up. I think it's important that we contact the affected parties as, as soon as possible. And once we submit this, how many months is it going to take?
They're estimating about four and a half months for the process and the maps to be officially updated.
So is there a way that we can do a variance and, uh, that we can vote just like we would on a rezoning or something like that? And have a variance for that man's property so he can start his build? And he can get his, his, um, building permit based on council approval of a variance?
We can work with the city attorney's office to have that discussion. At that point, we're making the assumption that FEMA will accept the map revision. And so we just need to make sure we're, um, careful before we issue a permit without it being approved by FEMA.
I agree. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Anker.
Just want, will you please conclude me on the email of the three addresses?
Yes, sir. We'll do that.
Mr. City Attorney, do you?
Yes, sir. We'll, um, discuss it with Deputy City Manager, but yeah, on the three, we'll have to put a disclaimer. If one of them applies for a permit, there'll be a disclaimer that this might be covered by FEMA in the future.
We can do that.
Okay.
No other questions, I just have a couple of updates to provide to council. We have, um, started, uh, with Malden and Jenkins. City Council has approved, uh, performance assessment as well as a risk assessment.
Thank you, Jeff.
Um, and so those, um, two projects have been started. Uh, we've met with the Audit Committee yesterday. We'll have a kickoff meeting of the risk assessment, uh, this afternoon and the performance assessment as well as moving forward. And we'll continue to provide updates to council and to the Audit Committee throughout that process.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, before we leave the city, uh, City Manager's agenda, uh, I just got a couple of questions for Deputy City Manager Hodge. You know, I know that we, you know, had the, um, our own internal auditor, you know, went into the Revenue Department and came out with a number. And then also Tropman and Pepper came in and they came out with a number. And I think that number was twenty to twenty-five million that they thought that was, uh, hadn't been collected. And there were some recommendations made by Tropman and Pepper along with our internal auditor, uh, Ms. McGinnis. And I just, what, what I'd like to know, uh, where are we at now with those recommendations? That was, um, um, put in place by Tropman and Pepper, uh, for the Revenue Department?
So we do have a Revenue Division, um, update that will be on the July twenty-second agenda along with the Revenue Division RFP. That will be on the July twenty-second agenda. We did come back, um, at one point with all of the recommendations that were ma- made and a status update on that. So we can include that as well in, in the Revenue Division update at the next council meeting.
Okay, awesome. And then, uh, another question I, I have is, uh, with the, uh, business licensing now, uh, uh, you know, the current process and timelines for that is, is, are we kind of like on track with those or?
We are actually ahead of where we typically are at this, um, process. But we'll include, um, that in the update on July twenty-second.
Awesome. And, uh, my last question for you is this, uh, uh, is concerning the, the pension fund. Okay, uh, uh, when Mr. Carr was here, he was saying how the money is pulled down and, and, and it's, you know, goes into, uh, an account. What, can you explain that process to me?
Yes, and we'll have a detailed process of how the pension fund works. Um, I've asked the Finance Director to do that at the next council meeting as well. But there is a separate, just in general, there is a separate, um, city bank account for the pension fund. There is also an investment account that, where the investments of the pension fund is housed. The city fund is where the, um, participating agencies, uh, pay into the city's pension. Their contribution goes into that city bank account. That is also where the retiree checks for their monthly payments are issued out of that city pension fund. And then there are, um, transfers in between the investment funds and the city account where the retiree payments are made. When there's funds that are needed to make retiree payments or to refund an employee when they leave employment if they have not been vested, they receive their funds out of that city's account. So that runs through the city's payroll account. So all retirees' monthly payments and any, um, employee contribution, any contribution from the employer goes into that account. And then the investment funds are held separately.
And this is a separate account, us, apart from, uh, the Revenue Department? When this money is pulled down, does it, does it roll over into the Revenue Department? And, and to, and, and, and over there with that money? Or is, is it a separate account inside of the Revenue Department where this money is pulled down to?
Okay, so the Revenue Department does not have a separate account. The city has a bank account that all deposits from every department are deposited into. The Revenue Division is just one of those, um, areas that deposits funds into the city's bank account. And it's tracked through the city's general ledger based on if it's a Parks and Recreation revenue that's posted, then that's posted to the general ledger revenue account for Parks and Recreation. When funds are deposited from the Revenue Division for Occupation Tax, there's a line in the general ledger where those funds are deposited. The Pension Fund is a separate bank account at Sanovas. They are not commingled. There are funds that move from the city's account into the Pension Fund for the employer and the employee's contribution to their pension. But it's not that, there's a transfer between those funds or a check written after a payroll runs that would take funding from the city's concentration account for the employer contribution, the city, and the employee's contribution that comes out of their paychecks. Then that would go into the pension bank account.
And so, uh, let me just make sure I understand before I, before I move on. So when it, when it's pulled down from the holding account, it's pulled down and what is it named when it's pulled down going into this Sanovas account?
So it used to say the Revenue Division on that, um, payroll processing. When the, um, payroll processes, there's a check that's issued from the city's account into, for the pension contribution of the employer and the employee. It used to say the Revenue Division. That has since been changed to the City of Columbus.
Okay.
Recently changed.
Recently changed.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, great. So therefore, there would be any concerns on the part of council or any retiree that this money is being pulled down and used for other things?
Absolutely not.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Sir. Counselor Tucker.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Deputy City Manager Hodge, I got, uh, just a, I'm going to be real quick, couple of things. The splash pad at Carver Park, uh, I was informed that we might have some features that may not be working properly. I got a photo, I can show it to you. Um, however, one of the things that I would like, uh, to try is to change the hours, uh, to seven, to seven on Monday through Sunday. I know we have to work with, uh, CPD or the sheriff. I don't know who's locking the gate. And we would leave it open until that Labor Day weekend, um, unless a, a unfortunate event, and I'm praying daily that nothing bad happens, um, from this change. Because the reason why it was closed is due to. reason why it was closed is due to sadly, you know, some kids getting shot and killed. Um, so if we could change the hours, seven AM to seven PM, um, it's now open Monday through Friday, but Monday through Sunday. So just doing it those two days. Uh, and then the last thing, I know that we put out, uh, our press release and our holiday schedule and we did it fair, fairly early for, um, Independence Day. The Fri- the people that do trash on Friday, I don't know if they weren't listening or watching, but we missed the mark for the Friday trash. People were putting trash out on Friday, it's been out all weekend, um, all over, I mean, all over that footprint for Fri- Friday trash. Um, and I know we mentioned that if it was a holiday, we would allow for like extra trash pickup. Well, these, these individuals didn't get their trash picked up on Wednesday, so it's, it's really a mess right now in, in certain, um, areas that have Friday pickup. They, they did not get the word. So I don't know if we can, uh, increase, not only just, and I didn't, I didn't even see it on the news, but it maybe it did show, but show, show on the news, do on radio, you know? I know we had it on social media, but just really, um, push it a, a little more, um, because it's gonna be kinda difficult for our drivers, um, yeah, coming up. It's, I mean, you can, you can ride through right now, just about every subdivision, Georgetown called, none of, probably half of Georgetown has their trash out. They did not get the word, so.
So we'll, we'll definitely look into that and Deputy City Manager Goodwin said she would take care of that, but I would also encourage citizens to make sure they sign up, um, for our platform.
Civic ready.
It used to be civic ready, it's called Rave.
Rave.
Have them sign up, they'll get text messages and phone calls of any, um, changes in the schedule. So that's another thing we can do is encourage citizens to make sure they sign up for that and then they would be notified. I know my phone goes off for every, um, area and so...
Can we do another media blast for the rave and how they can sign up or, you know, QR code or whatever? I just, I just felt bad because my phone has been ringing off the hook, um, but sadly because people did not get the word that it was Wed- and some thought that if it was not Friday, it was Saturday.
Right.
And that's, that's where the miscommunication and, you know, they was telling me, well, isn't it Saturday? I said, no, it's Wednesday.
We'll see if we can do a better job of communicating that when we have a holiday.
Yep, but thank you.
R A V E. Sorry, R A V E, and it's on the city's, um, homepage is the way to sign up. So citizens would be notified of changes in schedules. Um, the police department also has access to that system if there's an issue in a particular neighborhood, um, there's a weather alert, anything will come through on that, um, app. It'll come to your phone and to your, it'll be text to you. It's also available on the 311 app, there's a place to sign up as well.
Yes, Councilor, Councilor Hickey?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I, I just got a quick question for you, Mr. Mayor, uh, in regards to, uh, since we're still on city manager's, uh, agenda, uh, is there an update, uh, that you can provide council with, uh, Mr. Mayor concerning, uh, uh, the search for a new city manager or where you may be on that and?
Yeah, um, didn't bring it forward because there's really not that much change right now. They're still pulling together all of the tools that they're gonna use, the company that we've contracted with Mercer.
Mercer.
Uh, and, uh, they are, um, they're working right now to try to define exactly the type of publications and the different, um, organizations what they'll, they'll hit with this, um, for the advertisement. We, we prob- we are likely to ask about three members of council to serve on a little, uh, sounding board committee, it's not, not to serve on a search committee, uh, but it's just to try to get some feedback. So I'll be reaching out to those folks and selecting the ones that, that we'll try to put on there.
Okay, awesome, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
For the update.
All right, I think that's it.
Uh, one last item, uh, we will be coming back in August with, um, a jail update as far as the maintenance of the jail as, and also, um, in August, we'll be coming back with an assessment of a potential, um, location for the new jail. So those two will be coming back in August. And that concludes the city manager's agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk? Hang on, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the clerk's agenda, we have minutes of various boards to be received.
Motion second to receive the minutes, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
We have an add-on resolution, this is to excuse Counselor Garrett from today's meeting.
Motion second to approve Counselor Garrett's excusal, uh, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, that's approved.
Under board appointments, first we have the mayor's appointments for the Columbus Sports and Entertainment Authority, we have the position of the CPA and law enforcement representative.
Uh, CPA's still waiting to hear back from the, uh, law enforcement, it's Kelly Phillips. Kelly Phillips.
She may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, she's confirmed.
And just to briefly update council, I have the list ready to go and I'm working on setting up their organizational meeting to get them rolling. Next, we have the Pension Fund Employees Board of Trustees, we have the Business Community seat which is currently vacant.
Still working on it.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have council district seats. For the Civic Center Advisory Board, we need a representative for District Eight. On the Community Development Advisory Council, we need someone for District One. Thank you, sir. For the Youth Advisory Council, we have Districts Two, Three, Five, Seven, Nine, and Ten.
You did.
I do apologize, Counselor Kugel, I'll take that off our list. And, real quick, Counselor Davis is nominating Eli Davis from Calvary Christian School.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Davis, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
And you're nominated, Counselor Huff?
All right, there you go.
No, I had, I had a young guy, the, the young man that's listening, that's why I wanted to get on the microphone. I refer to him as the little bishop in town, he's very active in church around town in the Ebby Church, and I refer to his family as the first family. So, I wanted to nominate, uh, little bishop Zion, Z I O N, little name Javon, J A V O N, Days, D A I S E. He's very active in a lot of things around town, but he's, he's excited, so thank you for wanting to serve.
Thanks, sir.
And we need a motion for confirmation.
Yeah, uh, motion second to confirm, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Counselor Chambers?
Counselor Chambers?
I would like to make a nomination for, uh, District Ten, um, Clarence King. He retired from, um, the YDC Youth Detention Center as the, um, Parks and Recreation Director over there, and he's currently the Director of the Bridge Program, GED Program. So I would like to, um, nominate Mr. Clarence King for the Youth Advisory Council District.
Those are, that, that's for kids, uh, middle, middle school and high school.
Oh, those are kids? Well, he's not a kid.
I wasn't gonna ask what grade he finished. Uh, Counselor, Counselor...
What I already seen.
I figured you might. Counselor Da- we should let him show up, first meeting would be interesting. Uh, Counselor Davis?
Madam Clerk, would you tell me that name again that you stated?
For you? I have Eli Davis, is that correct?
Eli Smith.
Okay. I apologize. Eli Smith from Calvary.
Okay, we've...
I'll make that correction.
All right.
All right, and next we have designated seats, we have the Board of Elections and Registration.
Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
All right, and that's confirmation for Udi Roberts. Next, we have council appointments, any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. For the Downtown Development Authority, we have one vacant seat left. For the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, the seat for the Senatorial District Fifteen is vacant. New Horizons, Judge Raniere does not desire reappointment. Retiree's Health Benefits Committee, Thomas Barron, he is not eligible to serve another term. And briefly, I did want to make a request to council, um, with the unexpected passing of Sandra Davis, we, there was a lot going on at the time and I wanted to request a transitional audit for our office. We want to make sure that we fall in line with the normal procedures and the way things are handled with the city as a whole.
Yeah, so, um, while we were in our audit committee meeting and actually, um, over the past year, we've been trying to develop, um, some things where we can get a little more structure. When someone requests a transitional or any audit outside of the regular scheduled audit that would be on the agenda, we're asking that it be, um, presented via resolution. So, um, Mr. City Attorney, can we have a resolution that states that, um, we will do a transitional audit for the clerk of council? It's, it's in the, really it's to help with, um, tracking for our, for our, um, clerk of council. So when somebody asks about an audit, she can put in the resolution number and it populates for her. So this was, um, not just the audit committee, but also our clerk of council's suggestion. So, can we do a resolution and bring it back at the next council meeting to be voted on?
Aren't they normally on the mayor's agenda, but sure, we can bring, bring one back.
Yeah, but not as a resolution. But can we have an official resolution so we can track it by number?
Or, or you could have an oral resolution, bring it back in with the verification.
I think it'd help with her tracking if we do it the right way with the resolution.
No, we'll have a written one, but I'm just saying it can go on the mayor's agenda if you want it to.
That's fine, but just have it where we can track the resolution number.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right, and that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we've got two individuals that wanted another three minutes. First, Mr. Marvin Brogwata Senior.
Oh, hey, would you hit the button, I'm sorry. Uh, never, there it is, there it is, you got it, hang on.
Test one, test two, okay. So, Martin Brogwata Senior, again. So, let me say this, this is the second time in two ye- in twenty-two years that I've had a counselor respond to something that I said at this mic. Twenty-two years. That meant I must be doing my job. I'm rattling the cage and I'm gonna continue to rattle the cage, especially when it comes to funds, money. I just sent you guys an email from a parent and I saw, we talked, had a lot of talk today about funds. Sometimes you gotta look at not quantitative, sometimes you gotta look at quality. Read what that single mother said. We had her young man for four and a half years, just read it and you can feel the passion from her. Getting back to these, these, uh, these lawyer fees, it's real simple. I've told you all over and over, the bane of our existence is our charter. It's not you, it's not the person before you, it will never be the person after you. It will be your charter. Your charter is your Bible. Your charter is your regulation in the military. Your charter is what you refer back to. If you want things to stay just as they are, don't change the charter. If you want to leave a legacy where you are, change your charter. Like I said about those funds, it, I, and I heard the council say somebody's gonna do it free, I don't know if a lawyer in this world gonna do something free, but might find one. But I'll certainly be here to hear that conversation. But I want you guys under, I want you all councils, you elected leaders to understand, I got one minute.
Yeah, you do, I'm just, we'll tag it.
Okay, this, this, I got one minute. So this, this, this past weekend, I took some kids to the movies. I asked, I always have a mentoring session prior to, I asked them, did they have a good Fourth of July? One seven-year-old little boy said, no, they can brogue what I was scared. What you scared about? He said, I went down to Woodrow Parks and they were shooting. He said, I had to run. He said, the first time in my life. We're not talking about those things. We're talking about corruption, management of funds, mismanagement of funds, but we're not talking about the realization that's happening to our children, our youth. That's what it's all about, folks. That's why, that's why I come here every time and I'm here when you gather in and I'm here when you gathering out. There are four citizens still sitting here. This is not a sensationalization for me. This is real. Somebody is hurting right now, we got some youth that are hurting right now. That's what we need to be talking about. I yield thank you for your service, God bless you.
On the topic of political shenanigans, I am so impressed with you, Mr. Mayor, and how well you were paying attention at the meeting with the deliberations on paying the attorney's fees for Ms. Hollowell. When you squashed that substitute motion, it was beautiful. I could not understand why number two would object to two legal opinions that Ms. Hollowell's fees should be paid. Ms. Hollowell knew when she got her attorney, when she did that, I said hallelujah. When she got that attorney, she knew the rule. She knew that her fees had to be paid because the city attorney was very clear about that and he's, he doesn't do any friendly thing, he doesn't get down in the weeds, he just states the case law. I appreciate you, Mr. City Attorney, you made it clear. It was the obligation of us to pay the fees of Ms. Hollowell. So why the political shenanigans? In the first place, the sheriff never should have been investigating them. It started out with a data breach of the city attorney's finance information. I asked Isaiah, who asked the sheriff to investigate those women? And I do mean those women that Sheriff Conchman investigated. Ms. Alexander, Ms. Hollowell, who told him to do that? Isaiah said, I don't know. It was all about the data breach. I just asked him to look into how my finances got out like that. So who asked Sheriff Conchman to do what he did? Same kind of foolishness of him blocking me from getting into the government center 'cause I have to wait for a deputy escort to move about in the government center, Sheriff Conchman. So why does he go after women like that? That's my point, 'cause that's how... That's my point, 'cause that's how I see it, as misogynistic. There's no reason to investigate Ms. Hollowell or any of these. Why would he do that? And that is a fundamental question to be answered about Sheriff Conchman. And Number Two, you can't make something be what you want it to be when the law is clear. Political shenanigans, you need to stop it.
Time is up. Thank you, ma'am.
Need to stop it, political shenanigans. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I'll entertain a moment of motion to adjourn. Motion and a second adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We adjourn.